They're going to call the meeting to adjourn. Please take your seat and please pay your respects to the people around you. Call the meeting to order Carter County Commission, Carter County, Tennessee. We're in session Monday, November the 19th, 2018 at 6:00 PM. We welcome you here and look forward to the business that we have to do for the county. With that being said, I ask Mr. Gary Smith, Director of VMA, if he would come for you.
Good evening.
Should we have an incident heard that
requires us to evacuate the building? Our primary evacuation route is the south entrance, which is the monument outside the building, and we would assemble in the back parking lot.
Please, excuse me, Mr. Smith. Please give your attention to Mr. Smith, while I speak. That's courtesy and respect and consideration.
Thanks, sir. As I said, our assembly area will be the parking lot in the back of the building to allow emergency vehicles access to the front. Our secondary evacuation route is the stairs across from the elevator, and again, we assemble in this back parking lot. And just as a note for everyone, for information, there is an AED located downstairs next to the elevator. Hopefully, we won't leave that tonight. And it'll be a really important point. The restrooms are located on north end of the building on the first and second floor, and the second floor are handicapped access. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we'll ask the clerk, please call the roll. All present, thank you, Mr. Prophet. Appreciate it. If you have your agenda, the next agenda I'm going to make the approval of the agenda.
I will approve, please.
Commissioner Mike Hill, the next motion to approve, they have a second. Second by Commissioner Ron Tribby. And releases, additions, whatever. Call the roll, please.
Just kidding. Commissioner Richardson.
Where he was absent when the vote started, it wasn't a vote on it.
All right, let's move on. We have one absent. We can mark him coming in at a particular time, please. Before we have the prayer of Brother Campbell, Commissioner Campbell, a couple of people I want to mention that should be in our prayers. Coach Harry Sisk, long-term educator, long-term commissioner, very instrumental in the past in Carter County. Commissioner Von Cannon, if you would, sir. In just a second, say a word about him. But I also want to acknowledge, I just found out through the clerk, that Randy Montgomery, our janitor that takes care of the building so well, his brother passed away as well, Richard Montgomery. So before we, Mr. Von Cannon, if you keep it brief, sir, I appreciate it.
Carter County lost one of the greatest citizens in his head in my lifetime. Harry Sisk was the consummate civil servant, as far as I can tell. He spent 20 some years and was recognized, and probably the better numbers would come from his kin, who I didn't realize wanted, should have made this announcement tonight, but Harry Sisk spent 20 some years on the commission, spent a number of years on the Board of Education, and he has been a principal, a teacher, or coach. He had done it all. Spent early in life in the United States Navy. So he was a complete man, as far as I'm concerned, and the people of the third district. Ronnie and I and Harry ran into each other a few times. Ronnie, of course, is always the vote getter. But Harry was a budget man, knew his budget very well, and spent a lot of years as budget I would say this, that all of you new and young commissioners, spend your time learning the system like Harry did, and you'd be more effective as for your constituents. But I think we need to give a big round of something for Harry Sisk.
And we would also remember, as I said, Richard, as we stand and have the prayer. Immediately after prayer, Commissioner Tietjes will lead us into place.
For every part of God, Lord, that bow against today, we'll give you praise, Lord. This day that you've given, we'll have given us another chance, Lord, a better place than before. God can give us a chance, if you did take another breath. God, we can never praise you enough, Lord. And what we know that the Thanksgiving season is coming around, Lord, we should be thankful, liberated, Lord, and be content with what we have. Lord, the most precious thing that we want to thank you for is your son, Father. He came to give his life and cross that we could have prayed for. One day, you can be with him. What we did pray, Lord, for the Montgomery, Lord, its gains, Lord, we pray, God, its death to move into them families, Lord, we pray, God, that you come to the hearts, Lord. Lord, we pray that you put peace back, Lord, for the broken hearts that. Lord, we do thank you for this commission, Lord, we do thank you, Lord, for our country. Lord, we thank you for each one, God, that takes apart, Lord. We just pray, God, that we look for your wisdom and your knowledge. Lord, God, your word says, "My people, which are called in my name, shall humble themselves, pray, and see their face, and turn from their wicked ways; then will they hear from heaven, and then will hear from the land." Lord, we believe that tonight in our hearts, God. We just pray and believe what we pray. Lord, tonight, we do thank you for everything. Every prayer that you've answered, the ones you're going to answer. Lord, we pray, God, that you use each one of us to be a blessing to someone or someone else down my throat, God. We ask these things as I may. Amen.
Attention. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lay low. At this time, I'd like for the elected officials, appointed officials, and their guests, please stand, let's give them a round of applause. Thank you very much. At this time, we just celebrated, went through a celebration of Veterans Day. I think it would be remiss on my heart if I didn't ask the veterans to attend, and let's give them a round of applause. Thank you very much. If you look on down the agenda, on number eight, that's where we're located right now. Acceptance of the minutes for October about here, motion approved, second. Mr. Hill, Mike Hill. Second by Dr. Akka. Any discussion, anything on the minutes, corrections, release. Mr. Von Cannon.
On page 305, I believe that Ender Mayes is misspelled. I think it's M-A-Y-S as opposed to M-A-S-D. But I don't know the one Ender, so that's probably.
Thank you, Mr. Von Cannon. Any other, Commissioner Wood.
Page 308, on the motion that was made by myself, taken in my Mark Lady, that says appointment, it should be recommendation by the sheriff.
Should be recommendations instead of appointment.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other corrections? Please call the roll. Still voting, excuse me. Commissioner Richardson. Still voting, all eyes. Thank you very much. Before we get into public comments, there are a couple of corrections I'd like to share with you. Last month, we approved the county holidays, as you recall. Two of those holidays come up on the night of commission, which would be Monday night. Instead of having those people coming in on Monday night, we had a resolution in 2016, where we could actually change this to Tuesday night. So on MLK Day, will be Tuesday, January 22, at 6:00 PM. MLK holiday, Tuesday, 6:00 PM, 1:22. And the next one that needs to be corrected on this list is President's Day. We will have our commission meeting that night, Tuesday, on 2/19. Tuesday, 2/19, at 6:00 PM. Does everyone understand that? Okay, thank you. Now, at this time, we will move into public comments. You'll have five minutes for public comments. Yes, sir, if you'll come to the podium, state your name and address, we would appreciate it very much for the record, sir.
Mister Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Jim. I'm the resident of Carter County. I am here on behalf of the Carter County My office is in Johnson City, 128 East Martin Street. Mister Chairman, recently, a controversy arose concerning the use by the constables of the radio frequency used by the sheriff department in Carter County. The sheriff sent a letter to the constables advising them that they were no longer permitted to use the radio frequency, absent requirements or conditions set out in the letter. I was asked to communicate with the sheriff. I wrote a letter to him suggesting that we discuss the matter. I subsequently talked with the county attorney regarding that. However, no meeting has taken place. Last week, I and others and the constables met with the law enforcement committee and voiced our concern about the matter. We were very courteously received. We were advised that the matter would be eventually taken up with the county commission. I have prepared a position paper explaining what the issue is and the position of the constables in the county. And if you're familiar, I'd like to pass that out, and I think that explains where we stand on the matter. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else public comments? State your name and address, if you would, sir.
Well, it happens, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening. I know you get tired of hearing this, but we're still watching this money, and we don't seem to get any response to it. I believe about two meetings ago, the cloud and money in particular is what we're looking at, they come off of the school. It's been off, some of it's been off as much as four years. I look at two. There's a lot of income coming in somewhere. There's still all the tax rolls. I believe Mr. Hill back there about two meetings ago, made the statement that there was a windfall. Now, that's what they were going to use for some of the tax money that is trying to make up. And we've been told in the past by two different financial directors, that that money's just gone. Gone where? I guess it's like them boats down in Florida. It's in the building, but we don't know where. Now, we've asked and begged and done everything else to the commissioners and anybody in authority, to get together with all of us, show us where this money is. If it's gone, show us where it's gone. There's quite a bit of money coming in off of that. We know for a fact that the last year, we owe almost a million dollars payment on that money. So you've been having this much money coming in extra a year. And you keep telling us you're in the hole, in the hole. We're broke. We need wheel tax. We need all kinds of stuff. Now, why don't somebody come forward? The Budget Committee, the Chairman, the Commission Chairman, Attorney, Financial Director, a bunch of them can come together here and sit down and have a conversation about this, and find out where this money is or where it's not. And it'll settle a whole lot of this, but we're going to stay on it until we get a nature. It's the taxpayers' money. And these ladies and gentlemen out here work hard for their money. I know all of you do. But now, what's the problem of sitting down and showing us where this money is or was? It shouldn't be that hard. Of course, I'm kind of hard-headed, third grade's hard on me, but I'll get there. But now, we can do those big numbers. And there's a whole lot of big numbers here, numbers here. But there's other money other than this that's missing too. So why don't some of you come forward? From the mayor, to the financial director, the attorney, Budget Chairman, Finance Chairman, hopefully, we can get together and sit down, let's see if we can find this money. Now, Mr. Hill, I don't know how he ended up coming up and it was a windfall. Prior to that, it wasn't a no fall, nobody could find it. Two prior financial directors said it was just gone. That's kind of the wrong nature. You don't put that much money, it's just gone. Now, all we'd like for you to do, and we're going to stay on it until somebody gives, I don't think it's going to be us, we've been on it too long. These people out here, all of them, needs to know what this money's at. You all do too, that pays taxes. Now, what would be the problem? We could get together and sit down and have a conversation with all these people. Budget Committee Chairman, Finance Chairman, Attorney, Mayor, all the people that's in charge of this money. So they all have a conversation about this. If we can work this out, we'll shut up when we find out.
That's fine, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Do we have other public comments? Come on up, sir, please. If you would state your name and address, I would appreciate it, sir. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Constable Mark Carrier, 203 Slim Mine, Elizabethan. That's one, you know, our council gave you that letter, or that memo there to ask some of the things that has gone on and happened. And I wanted to assure everyone here at the commission, that as far as what the state law provides, or its requirements for the constables, we have done it. We take our training every year. We take 40-hour in services with, you know, qualified instructors. We go to shooting range. And as far as the psychological evaluation, that come up a couple of years ago. And that was said by the county attorney. We couldn't, it falls under the HIPAA Act, and we couldn't have anybody to hold our records of the psychological evaluations that we wanted to have. And we tried to do that, and they said that that was something that would have to be done on the state level, not the county. Now, we've taken the time out of our schedules and worked and done our training, and we, that we're basically elected volunteers is what we are. We love to serve our communities and our county. And as far as this radio, I never thought we'd ever have any problem like this. But it's made it almost impossible to do our, the job we were elected to do by the taxpayers and the citizens of Carter County. If there hasn't been any complaints, they haven't brought me. We've never had any complaints or any. And if there was complaints, then there should have been charges filed or gone to that next level. There was one possible that did get trouble, and there's charges on him. But to punish all of us, I don't understand that. And, but I want to make that clear, that we have done what state law has required us to do. And we love to serve each and every one of you guys. And I just, I wanted to let you know that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gary. Do we have any other public comments from anyone? No other comments, see you tonight, and move on with the other. Number 10 on the agenda, we have, we have a woman, a constable filled vacancy in District Eight, that's been vacant for some time. And I only have one application in front of me for that particular vacancy, Mr. Phil, and that's Mr. Rob Carroll. Is Mr. Carroll present? If you'd like to address the commission, Mr. Carroll.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen of the commission, I served proudly as constable in the eighth district for 40-plus years. Couple of years ago, I had some health issues. I retired as constable. God seemed fit to take care of those. And I'm as well today as I feel like I've ever been. I enjoyed serving there. I enjoyed working with the Sheriff's Department, the City Police Department, the Fire Department, the Rescue Squad during my time. I enjoyed being available to the citizens of not only my district, but of Carter County. I feel like during my time as constable, that I served this county well. To my knowledge, there was never any complaints filed against me. I went above and beyond what was required with my training. Many times, I've gone out of my way to go by somebody's house and sit in the driveway while they've gone to the funeral home where they've lost a loved one, to be sure that nobody would break into their home. There's a lot of elderly people in the eighth district, especially of the projects that I checked on, because they had nobody. I'm wanting to come back to serve my district and serve our county, and again, do the things that I did while I was in there watching the ball, if I'm allowed the opportunity. I guess that's basically probably all that I have to say, unless you have some questions you'd like to ask me, and I'll be happy to answer those. But with your help, and with the help of my sake, I'll do the best job that I can for Carter County if I'm appointed back to this position. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do I hear a nomination to?
I would also, if it's in order, like to move the nomination season we elect by acclamation, sir.
Yes, sir. So, so no other applicants, motion made, and also, part of that motion was to do so as acclamation. Call the roll. Oh, I'm sorry, second. I have a Commissioner Rogers, second. All eyes, you are now appointed the Commissioner for, I mean, excuse me, the, does it elevate, sir? Yes, sir. De-elevator, I'm not sure which. Constable for the eighth district. Thank you, sir, for coming.
Thank you, Robert.
Okay, moving along on the agenda. Do I hear motion to approve the number in the box, or do you would like to read those first category, please?
I'm P. Julie W. Burton, from Long Island, this is Brenda Alhoun, Captain Henry, Amanda Blair, Melissa Ann Eastwood, Monica Williams, Monica Johnson, Pamela T. Ward, and non here, she is Debbie Street.
Debbie Street. Motion approved. Sir, motion approved by Commissioner Connor, second by Commissioner Mike Hill. Any discussion? Not call the roll, please. Motion approved. Thank you very much. I'll hand it down to your report, sir, if you would come forward and give us a report. We're looking forward to hearing it.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I'd like to pour, I'm happy, still happy to be here, and things are going good right now, so good. I want to keep doing my honeymoon stage, but I'm excited to see a couple of things, just short things. The Health Department, they're getting ready to do a second phase up there, the ones already there have been far. Things after bids for the second part of the renovation of the Health Department. I talked with Commissioner Isaiah the other day, I think we're moving along on the courthouse security, we're getting close on that, so we'll be long when we put bids after Tomorrow night at 6 o'clock, we've got a scheduled meeting at the dry hall that's in the first district for water, like a water authority up there, we've got a meeting with the First Tennessee Development. So come and have a public meeting scheduled to try to help get a grant to help them get water to the dry hall. So for all, everybody's welcome to come to that. We ran the paper, we did everything we're supposed to do on that. So in the mayor's conference room, we'll be meeting 6 o'clock with the people from First Tennessee Development, talk about the grant and what we need to do. Last thing, we've got 44 people enrolled. And so another fire department, we're going to try to be going, it's called Six Four Hour Firefighter Course. Six Four Hour Course, certified these guys, or ladies and gentlemen, to building, apartment buildings, you know, they're certified through the state, so. There's been the fire department, we've got a set up to them, and now we've got forty-four through our Carter County that's going to participate in this, and we're going to try to do it, start the first week of January. We're going to try to do it a couple nights a week, at night, four hours, like four hours at a time, maybe an eight-hour skill day or something, but it's a Six Four Hour Course. We have forty-four, forty-four people signed up, and that goes toward the ISO rating for insurances. And I've been checking, doing a little checking on it, most of them recognize it, some of them, I think the town said he is different, recognize it, but some of them, some, most of them recognize this insurance rating, like I think Stone Creek, some of them five, Wes Carter, they're five or something. That's good, that's a good rating. And that keeps the insurances down, and we're going to get these, the more people got certified, the more ratings, we get some of the other areas, get the insurance down for the people, for our citizens, and it's not going to cost us a thing. The city's going to do it, and while they're on duty, they can have classes at the fire station too, and when they get through, they'll have to be certified, so. Other than that, that's all I've got, if any questions remain, but we have boxes moved upstairs now. Everybody knows that if you have any questions, you're allowed to come in, ask me anything you need to know. Say if I know, if I don't, I'll find out who does. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, we're moving rather quickly now, that's good, so. Number thirteen on the agenda, commissioners' reports, committee's reports. And we'll start out, we're good with agriculture and animal, animal shelter, agriculture, go ahead.
If animal shelter, you can go ahead, I'll follow up on agriculture, if you'd like.
That's okay.
I don't really have a report from the animal shelter, just questions and money to get, push some hires, and keep it open. So that's, that's very long.
Thank you, Ms. Colvin. You want to go ahead, Mr. Garland, with the budget and agriculture, if you'd like to do that together.
I'll start with the fun stuff, excuse me, Agriculture Committee, we met Tuesday night. I got the minutes late today, so didn't have a chance to include those, and everybody's back, and I can send those back through email. I just want to touch on the highlights of that meeting. First, we were discussing all business, and I think it was sent to Building and Grounds for, want to do some work on some windows, refurbishment of replacements and paints, and I forgot an estimate on it, it was sent to Building and Grounds, I do think. Be part of the historic commission, they have to go through that, I do believe, as far as what we're requesting, but someone would like to move forward with to get those ladies, uh, some better windows. They did, the ten said, the Tennessee Nutrition and Consumer Education Program, excuse me, the lady in that position, April Pearson, she's decided to take a, I think, just a lead, but she's, she's moving out of that position, so it will become, I think, University of Tennessee has not said anything to as far as filling out that position at this time, but it will become available. Program updates, they're always good about, they just know what's going on. Food and Consumer Sciences, we can see her, that's her, Ms. Clark, that's hers. Several things going on there, partnering, partnering with Red Legacy to teach job readiness courses, and also Families Free First Judicial Drug Court, and the same, same thing for that job readiness. An important one, partnering with Elizabeth and Carter County Library, that hosts diabetes classes management, very important for, I think a lot of people suffer from that disease, so, so a good program there. Another very important here also, we've talked about this before, but we've got a program, Grandparents Raising Grandkids Program, and that's very important, and this number really shocked me, that in this county, and I think there was a survey or a study done, that eight hundred families in this county have grandparents which are raising children. So this, this is, you know, a great resource for this county, I know Ms. Clark will do a, teaching that also. We have applied for some grant money, I think, for this program, not exactly sure what that covers, but it should be great if it comes through, we can get some extra money for the workers, and we know that's, that's very important, and a very tough job for, you know, grandparents and families that have. Four H always active, they've got their winter contest date coming up, January tenth, I mentioned this, if anybody would like to be part of the judge or be part of that program, it's at TCAT. I get ahold of them, talk to me, we can pitch you something. That includes both speaking, bread making, and photography contests, it's really, I mean, last year did some judging, that's for town for kids, so. Also, in this month, it's Agriculture, Literacy, and Reading in November, so they have some Four H students who are going out and meeting with young kids and their families, so I thought it was a good program. Christmas Parade is coming up, it's December first, they've got a float in that, and I'm sure many others do as well, but that is December first, I want that on the counter, coming right up. And also, an important and a good fundraiser, good cause, Mr. Hill sits on this board, but they've got members that will be serving the meal at the Annual Feast of Joy for the Shepherd's Inn, they're selling tickets now for that, and that made it December third, they asked people if they'd like to attend that, kind of support, I'm not sure if that's twenty-five bucks a ticket or something like that, but, you know, another good fundraiser for a great cause. A Four H chick train, taking applications, and that's for raising up the chicks, and they had a good auction in the spring, selling those, and made, made a whole bunch of money for, for their program, so it was another good thing. And several Four H camp, got details on that, dates and prices, their website's, it's a good place, UG Extension, I think, through that, so had questions like that, check them out, they're always giving a call. Kathleen in agriculture, she's always busy, got a lot of programs that she's doing, and offers a lot of classes, which is, is good for agriculture in this county, brings in some money as well. They, they usually feed courses, so that money comes in and stays in this county. One of them was the Master of Small Rumor course, I think they had thirty-one clients showed up for that, she said, I think somebody came about four hours to be part of that program. So they're spreading the word out there and getting people involved, and Kathleen does a great job, excuse me, teaching those classes. Advanced Master Beef is another course, and it's, it's another, you know, it's a state fee for that, so that's money that comes in, but also at the same time, you know, teaches our, our farmers in those raised cattle, some good techniques and, and good programs to implement to only increase their, their yields and their production. So, she's doing a good job. Some other programs that they plan to host in 2019, a gardening, gardening series, lawn care series, grafting, pruning class, Ford series, Farmer's First Aid, and the Advanced Master Beef. And I mentioned the Feast of Joy, I think tickets are on December fourteenth, and the date is December third for that. And also, a point of interest right here, the Carter County Cowmen's Association is very kind to, they donated a chute and some blowers and supplies for students who are part of the showstop team at Happy Valley. Ms. Kathy Selberston in the direction of that, and I think that's open to any kids who are out the county, that want to be part of that program. So, but something new and, and fun for those kids, just something else to offer, so. We appreciate them, they're always working hard, we'll see them sometime. That's all I have for the answer, I had a question. Okay, thank you, and move on to the budget, everybody's ready for that, I think we are. Now, again, with the, excuse me, the first item, it's to restore funding to the highway department, and that is the amount of fifty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars and ten cents, and this is money to be provided with unclaimed property received from the state, this was discussed last month, and I will put that in form of a motion.
Do you have a second, Mr. Chairman? Second by Commissioner Trivik, end of discussion. Discussion, stand then call the roll. Mr. Reston, please. Motion passed, thank you.
The next item, this is to the EMA to restore their funding at twenty thousand dollars, and this money will come from, from the same unclaimed property received from the state, I'll put that in form of a motion.
Do you have a second? Second by Commissioner Jenkins, end of discussion on the motion. Discussion on the motion. Stand then call the roll. The bill's up. Motion passed, thank you.
Our next item is a grant to, a matching grant to approve a courtroom security grant of fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fourteen cents. Fifty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars and thirty cents will come from the state grant, and with matching funds of five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars and eighty-four cents, coming from the courtroom security reserve. And this is matching funds, but this money is needed up front, so that's what we're, we're looking to approve right now, and I will put that in form of a motion.
Do you have a second on the motion? Commissioner Connor, second to the motion. End of discussion on the motion.
I, I will add, that, that is for the courtroom security, and that, it's for an X-ray machine that goes out front. I think some bulletproof panels, I think, Miss Moore, is that correct, for, for this bench here, and magnetometer or something like that, so, specific stuff, but a good grant, it's more proceeds of, proceeds of leadership there.
Next to the call the roll. The bill's up. Motion passed, sir.
Next item is to approve a total of eight thousand dollars to go to the animal shelter to hire and part time employees, and this funding will come from, without, 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 I'll put that in form of a motion.
Commissioner Connor, discussion on the motion, end of discussion. Commissioner Black.
Commissioner Carroll. I have checked, we, we've got, Dog Car has twenty-six thousand, four hundred and forty-eight cents, and nobody's bumping it. Why, and they get that account, the dollar, nobody gives a shit about it, I think that's how we need to spend it, anyway.
Did you pass, did you pass this out to everyone?
Yeah.
Mr. Black.
Yeah.
Mr. Connor, do you want to respond to that, please?
Yes, I'll be glad to, that is from donation money, and most donation money is earmarked, and particularly, I just talked to Shannon, earmarks for Spain New, food, blankets, and the same, and we cannot spend that money when it's earmarked for other items. Shannon just walked in, if you have a question, I'm sure she's.
Ms. President.
May I correct? That we can spend that money, just for funding to the, if it is earmarked, it has to be used, it has to be earmarked money. Well, how have we been using it?
We've been using it.
I shouldn't we have to, no, no.
I'll sign up, would you mind speaking to this, please?
We use the donations when we get low on funding for the medical, like for the space maneuvers, and the rate we're going, we will run out probably, somewhere around the end of April or May, and we transfer that money over. A thousand dollars of that was given to us by the state specifically for space maneuvers. We do transfer that money over for food as well. And it's been earmarked for, specific for blankets and bedding, some of it, and that's what we have to spend that for as well.
Okay, I've got another question.
Yes, sir, go ahead, Mr.
You're saying that you're not open down there, a lot of the colleges in Florida, are you there when you're not open?
I don't know who to tell you we're not open a lot, but we're open most days, some days we have to open later, and yes, we're there seven days a week.
You're there, you're your duty, for paying the forty-seven thousand dollars.
You're having to check my pay.
That's, that's.
If I might address that, I'd appreciate it. Our employees have to go in Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, they have to clean the cages, they have to take care of the animals every day of the week. When we say they're not open, that means they may not be open to the public in the afternoon because they haven't got their ready, because they don't have enough employees to get it ready.
But they are, they are in there.
They are there every day cleaning and preparing the cages.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Levens, I'm here, Dr. Carroll.
Let me put this in perspective, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
We've taken the caution by the sheriff not to use the trustee blood.
That's right.
Do not want to depend on that, and on several occasions, if you've, or we had to close the shelter because of the fact that we didn't have trustees to do the job.
Right.
We have about the same consensus of hours as does Johnson City, Washington County, yet they have four full-time employees and twenty-nine part-time employees to take care of the same animals. So I think if we're going to continue in the business of animal shelter and animal control, we need these employees even as part-time, although, as I indicated to Shannon, I think it would probably be better if we had full-time. Part-time people don't like to do part-time, they really have a full-time job, but I think it's consistent with what we're about and what the needs of this county are for animal shelter. Thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions, comments?
Yes, sir, this is, we approved ten thousand at the last meeting when I was up here before, so this is for two positions, about eighteen thousand, right? This, this is to get us through this year, and some of them will need to be, you know, determined for full-time positions. They are top of whatever.
And then the board can reassess what they need going down the road. Commissioner Black.
So you're telling me that basically you're saying eighteen thousand finishes this whole year out?
Yeah, I think that's determined.
Part-time.
You just won't come back and ask for any more?
I can't guarantee that, I mean, it's, it's possible.
And the new budget cycles, when you bring the budget.
Yes, I think that that's what that, it was determined to get us through to that point.
That was my discussion for, for state, you see. Any other questions? Call.
Just quickly, so it comes out to eight thousand dollars per.
It's about nine thousand, two positions, eighteen, eighteen thousand.
For two part-timers, for one part-time, nine thousand dollars for two months.
No.
No, it's two part-time.
Through July, actually.
Are you good?
Commissioner Jack, I want to sign up for that job.
You did, I think you did. Excuse me, Mr. Collins, Commissioner Collins, okay, the comments are spread, please.
Well, they say they can't hear me.
Oh. Okay. I thought, let me just, let me just go ahead and say this. One of the things that's, that's my job, you all put me up here to do my job, this job, we have to respect each other on the floor. We have to respect when other people are talking on the floor, and your comments should be directed toward us, not toward the gallery, and to turn around and address someone in the back, that kind of gets offensive to some degree. Now, Ms. Collins.
My apologies, the people in the back have told me that they couldn't hear me, so that's why I turned around.
And I was not dressing you down, I was dressed down. No, ma'am, I was gone, for the record, wait a minute, for the, no, for the record, I let people do this last month, and I went home and I evaluated my position, you all instilled me to do this job.
You all instilled me to do this job. You trusted me to do this job. And I wanted to make sure that this, this time around, that everyone would respect each other and we would have quiet when other people were talking. That's all I'm saying. I was not signaling you out if you felt that way. I'm sorry if you felt that way. I was telling the entire commission. Would you?
Madam clerk, call the roll. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry. No problem. I'd like to address the case. This is served by a combined board of city and county. And we're well represented, and they are too. But when we're expending funds, does that also mean that it's a fifty-fifty? Or we're deciding, or we?
No, we discussed this and this is going to be, you know, our money right here. I, I think that they were talking in some good terms that the city may be in negotiation to up there. And they give us a hundred thousand dollars right now. And I think that the way the animal shelters, you know, progressing, moving forward, you know, we've had some tough times before. And that's why they took some of that funding away. But I think we're positioned now to improve those relations and possibly receive some more money from the city.
In order to protocol again, anyone else want to speak before I allow? Commissioner Culler to speak again. Commissioner Culler.
Just to address the question, there have been problems in the past. We now have a new board. And as Commissioner Johnson said, it's equally served by county and the city. The city did not feel like that they should be giving fifty percent due to the size of the city compared to the size of the county. They give twenty-five percent. We have a very good working relationship and that has been discussed. Hopefully in the future that might change. But as it was discussed in the line of budget, city, a city and county tax, those are coming in double anyway. So that is.
All right, thank you very much. Now, let's call the roll. Next item, next item to approve general fund one oh one amendment number five. Which you can follow all this stuff is in the packet also if you want to see this stuff. For a total of three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, fifty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents. And there are nine items with a total of a hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents coming from fund balance. Six of those at twelve thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine and eighty-five cents will come from the general unassigned fund balance. Those were to include commission travel, forty-five hundred dollars, some excessive travel, I think, for the amount of people that went on second, Mr. Hill. Post-employment benefits, I think, had to do with the audit. Mr. Burgess advised, and he did say that was about six thousand dollars and some smaller expenditures. Yes, sir.
Could we possibly take this line by line, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, absolutely.
You want to do that?
Everybody has, has been included in the packet. You want to go there? I think there's about fourteen items. I think that's right.
I'd like to make an unclaimed motion on that first.
I'll move that we take this line by line.
Go ahead. Do I hear a second? Second. Dr. Carroll, second. Any discussion?
Line by line, Mr. Chairman.
Sir, we'll approve each one. Item for item, okay, we can do that. Item number one, to allocate fund received by Sheriff's Department for towing bills. That's three hundred dollars.
Second. Did you make a motion?
I don't.
I think I heard a motion.
No motion.
I don't think so.
I'll move it's open. The floor is open.
The floor is open. Motion to approve. Say, Mr. Mike Hill, my motion is second. My Commissioner Jenkins, any discussion? Any discussion? Madam clerk, call the roll.
This is Culler.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion passed. Item number two, which we're going to.
Item number two, to allocate inmate phone commissions to purchase computers and server upgrades within the Sheriff's Department. Over seventeen thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Floor is open for motion. Floor is open for motion. Okay. I'll say. Here. The motion, my, Commissioner Travis Hill, second. Commissioner Mike Hill, any discussion on number two?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Johnson.
Every one of these items will come from fund balance. There's a couple that they're coming from the unsigned and they are highlighted in here. I think I can.
Can they do, that each one of these, they teleport the money to the government?
Yes, sir.
Did I talk it any better?
Could you do that, Chairman, for Gergen?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Madam clerk, call the roll. Motion passed.
Item number three, to allocate funds received by the Sheriff's Department for security services. A hundred dollars and a rebate, a hundred and twenty dollars coming from miscellaneous refunds. What is not coming from anywhere, it's going to.
I'll make a motion. Motion by Commissioner Jenkins, second. By Commissioner Culler. Any discussion? Call the roll, please. Motion passed, sir.
Item number four, to allocate funds received by the Sheriff's Department for bulletproof vests. That's in balance, sixty-four hundred dollars, sixty cents.
Motion to approve.
I'll say.
Any discussion on the motion? Call the roll, please. Bill, motion passed.
Item number five is to move general appropriations to the proper category. Fifty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars coming from medical claims and will be moved to medical and dental services.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
You're looking for one line item to do.
Call the roll.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Mr. Hill, Ms. Brown. Dr. Redd, sir. Your season. Ms. Brown. Mr. Hill, above. Motion passed. Yes, sir, excuse me.
At this time, I would like to make a motion to approve items six, nine, and twelve in a row. If that's okay.
Maybe six, nine, and four.
Six, nine, and twelve.
Six, nine, and twelve.
Right. That should leave just a couple.
Is that okay for you, Chairman, of Garland?
Yeah, that's okay.
Second. Second, Dr. Edcoff, any discussion on six, nine, and twelve? No discussion, please call the roll.
I will, I, I'll. Item number six, to allocate prisoner board to pay accumulated comp time and holiday pay for the Sheriff's Department and jail. Total of a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars. Item number nine, to allocate funds to pay for system to accept online to liquidate tax payments and corresponding maintenance agreement with chance report. Fifteen hundred dollars. And number twelve, to allocate funds required for OPEB study. That's audit related, at sixty-nine hundred dollars.
Got a motion, second. Call the roll, please.
And that sixty-nine hundred will be coming from unassigned fund balance right there. Item seven, to allocate funds necessary for an increase in an annual fee, an annual fee for the Veterans Service Office. I'm sorry. Forty-nine dollars coming from unassigned fund balance.
I'll make that motion.
I'll do it.
Second. Mr. Culler.
Just a question. Why are we, why are we making an increased fee for the Veterans Office who is down the hall, according to Paul?
Fee for some, a system, yes.
I'm sorry.
Annual fee for a system, any, some system, yes.
Oh, some, some, okay.
I guess I'm increasing that fee.
Any other discussion? Please call the roll. Motion passed.
Item number eight, to allocate funds for a hearing device needed for county commission slash committee meetings. Seventy-five dollars coming from unassigned fund balance.
Make a motion to approve. Exactly. Motion by Commissioner Culler, second item, Detective Commissioner James, or, I'm sorry, Commissioner Brown, second. Any discussion on that, Mr. Culler, or anyone else?
Not, not.
Okay, let's call the roll, please.
I will add, I think this, this is a portable device and can be taken from here, can be taken over to the.
Highway car. Very good, thank you.
Motion passed.
Item number ten, to fund shortage in county commission travel. Shortage due to the large number of commissioners who attended the training in August. Forty-five hundred dollars coming from unassigned fund balance. I'll put that in formal motion.
Second. Motion second by Mr. Travis Hill. Any discussion? No discussion, please call the roll, please. Bill, motion passed, sir.
Item number eleven, to allocate funds for annual software assurance for General Sessions' judge. Three hundred and fifty dollars coming from unassigned fund balance. Put that in motion.
First, second. Commissioner Brown, second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Doctor Commissioner Johnson, unassigned fund balance.
Yes, sir.
I thought there was a, my memory, that was line item, the third budget for that department. Or something.
In previous years, it was taken out of county buildings category. For some reason.
Did it get missed? Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Did it get missed in the working here somehow? In the budget process? I understand some of this stuff up here was probably an increase in the price of news and subscription. Nobody knew what's coming, right? So is this one of those deals?
It, it was most likely into budget in county buildings. We could just move county buildings to his category instead of taking it from fund balance. It's re-appropriated.
Think it made better replacement. No. Makes sense.
Do we need to boot that back to buildings and grounds or something?
I don't think that's necessary. I mean, if we, of course, we've got a motion on the floor. If we can appropriate it to the right line item, it'd be better than taking it from fund balance, I think.
Any other questions?
Dr. Edcoff. Chairman, please. Page twenty-six is the budget for Sessions Court. There isn't a line item.
Get it dotted, buddy.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second.
Bill, motion passed, sir.
You. Item thirteen, to allocate social security payments received to the jail for rent on Arnie Hill Building. Additional request, that's it. The allocated security, social security payments received by the jail for rent on the Arnie Hill Building. Be sixty-eight hundred dollars going into Federal Reserve. Put that in formal motion to approve.
Do you hear a second? I'll make a second. Commissioner Jenkins, any discussion? See, no discussion, please call the roll. Motion passed.
And below that was a motion, Sheriff, at his request, and it passed the budget, the request that all future payments received during eighteen, nineteen be allocated for the same purpose. I'll put that in formal motion.
Second. Second, Travis, Commissioner Travis Hill, any discussion? Call the roll, Madam clerk. Motion passed.
Item fourteen is to allocate funds for raises, a hundred and sixty-four dollars and ten cents each for agriculture extension employees. This was not included in the original budget, so this will be money coming from fund balance, unassigned fund balance. I'll put that in formal motion to approve.
Second, Mr. Brown, second. Any discussion? No, just Commissioner Johnson.
Colonel, Mr. Chairman, you're guarding the middle of the year. Why is raises coming up there? I mean, I've heard good people and I know they go to Arnie Hill. You know, in the prior administration.
Well, the reason we did this is we need to consider them a county employee. This, this is the same, the same amount that was awarded to each, each county employee before, the two same rates that we considered and approved for the budget. This, this was to include these ladies as well from their office.
Did they not get that before?
They didn't receive it in the budget before. So this is.
All county employees?
Well, yeah, the county employees, I was asking him.
We pay about thirty-seven percent of their salary.
Well, I mean, they're giving everybody else a share rent, but I mean, the more time identified, if they're a county employee and everybody else is already going, why is this coming up with this?
Well, we didn't include them and we had to send, send a letter to the University of Tennessee saying, we approved this budget and approved a, that a hundred and sixty-four dollar, ten cent raise, basically for those employees. They were not included. University of Tennessee had to come back and say, yes, we'll, we'll agree with that to give them that money.
Yes, sir, thank you. Any other questions? Not call the roll. Motion passed.
Thank you. Next item, to approve drug control fund one twenty-two, amendment two, for a total of three thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars. Next item, to approve the drug control fund 122, amendment two, for a total of $3,894.70. This is money coming from unassigned fund balance, $3,894.70, $3,894.70 coming from fund balance, put that in form of a motion.
Your second.
How's that?
Any discussion? Commissioner Johnson?
Is this not in the office holders?
But, we're trying, we just moved, let me relax, I'm like a log. Right, Commissioner Bookie?
This is coming from the drug control, drug control fund balance. Item number 122.
So, this is not in the unassigned fund balance?
It says unassigned fund balance.
Right.
Is it fund 122, the drug control fund, that had anything to do with the drug control?
If they have their own unassigned...
Okay, their balance...
So, that will be coming from their, their fund balance, drug control.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Motion passed.
Next item, to approve general purpose school fund 141, amendment number three, for a total of $32,900. One item, and all the money comes from the general purpose school fund, unassigned fund balance, and this is for the purchase of huge loopholes, transporting the city name for Hampton High School baseball field.
Second. Second, Commissioner Travis Hill, any discussion before call the roll? Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Next item, to approve reserving all, we covered that before. Okay. Next one, to approve funding of $20,000 to the Sheriff's Department for an SRO position for the remainder of this year, funds will come from general unassigned fund balance, put that in form of a motion to approve.
Your second. Second. Any discussion? No discussion? Commissioner Mark Hill?
Where is this SRO going?
It's a running supervisor.
This, you remember last year, we did an, we thought on the budget, we had discussions, we had to hear if y'all want to fund one, school to fund one, the school's funding there, because we ran the money. Never motion made, this part of the SRO, I was taught that we did, we all agreed to it, the money was never lost, so this gets to this, this...
So, there was never a motion paid?
Correct. We all agreed, y'all agreed to it, but there's never motion made that it was money, ran it off, I didn't worry many for it, so...
Can you come over here?
How many do we have up there?
With this, we will have 15 plus one.
And that will cover all our schools right there?
Correct.
And I mean, the comment was made before, and we're pretty much setting the standard as far as SROs goes in this state. So, that's, you know, it's great, we can do that. But if this is also a position, then we will have to fund it next year's budget, also a full-time position.
Next year, we'll have to...
Commissioner Mark Tanner?
Yes, sir.
I would like to know what the SRO cost is for the 16 schools in the county? Total cost of the SRO, for...
Of these positions, the, so, pay for county, and we pay for private, total cost is $682,190 is what the total cost, and that is for personnel, the equipment, and the training of the SRO. The total is $682,190.
And you said the school pays for 10 of those, basically?
School pays for 10. We have a contract or an MOU with the school system where they transfer monies to the counties for this.
Does that include the labs that you had?
No, sir, that is not...
Probably not covering a little bit of it.
Yes, for the last position. So, you would add $20,000 to that. So, it'd be just a little bit over $700.
Increasing benefits?
That's benefits, gasoline, cars, training, equipment, you know, the whole, the whole again.
What kind of percent, plus 6%, 9%? Your original 12 plus 6%, 10%? That's the total cost of all the SROs, I think.
Yeah, that's the total cost.
That's 100% total cost.
Any other questions?
Commissioner Taylor? You said there was 15 plus one?
Yes. There will be.
There will be.
You don't have supervisor. This guy, they have vacation time, train time, and they have four time, I forget what time, plus sick time, this gives us that one supervisor, lieutenant's position that will rotate, then the 15 supervisor, they're in, and then one's out.
Now, you said then the one, is that another couple more things you could get in?
No, no, no. The northeast wants one, northeast will type one.
Correct.
Any other questions? Call the roll, please. Pass.
Next item, to approve the monetary and product donations made to the animal shelter, that's $990 in donations, $1,370.11 from Walmart, for a total of $2,360.11, put that in form of a motion.
Second. Second, call the roll, please.
Motion passed, sir.
Last but not least, to approve the local matching funds of $192,984 for a new emergency operations center located in the 911 building. Make $100,000 of that coming from the capital reserve fund that we set up, and the additional $92,984 coming from unassigned fund balance, put that in form of a motion.
$92.
$92,984.
Put that in form of a motion, your second. Second, Commissioner Jenkins, second. Floor's open for discussion, please call the roll.
Chairman Mark, I think.
Commissioner Jenkins?
Mr. Smith, if you stand up, Bill, give us a little more description on what this is, what it entails, what we knew of this here, and what we sure wanted, what it means.
In February of this year...
We need to, please, the order of the committee offices.
In February of this year, we had the opportunity to apply for community development block grant, came forward commission to seek approval, commission that approved that. We put together the package along with the First Tennessee Development District, and it was approved. We have received a grant from First Tennessee in the form of community development block grant, $315,000. The project was based on a budget that was put together by the architect, which is the way the program had to work based on requirements for the grant. In other words, they had to select the architect, which First Tennessee Development District did, reading sites with the architect that was selected. They took together the budget based on the space available and how we have given them a basic layout. That's how the project came about.
So, we have no actual firm numbers of what this is going to cost?
No, this is, it's an estimate, but it's, I think it's fairly close.
Mr. Smith, I've had several people call me, asking how, the engineering firm who do these projects, could you touch on that?
I'm sorry, sir.
How do we go through the process of selecting the engineering firms to develop this stuff?
It was actually part of the grant process, First Tennessee Development District put out a request for biz, or whatever you want to call it, in order to get the architect, and I believe, I'm not positive, but I believe reading sites was the only firm that was why. Again, I'm not positive on that, but that was part of the grant process, they had to select them.
It is a bid process.
It is a process where they open it up and allow anyone to apply without...
Take requestable proposals?
And these numbers were based on reading sites, their numbers?
Correct.
To get the total of 504?
Commissioner Travis Hill, do you have the numbers?
I'm sorry, I'll cut you off. No, it's, I'm sorry. I just want to make a quick comment, I'm the one who actually made the motion to the same municipal commission, not the budget committee, talked to Mr. Smith today, he provided me with the numbers, I wish I had these other night, because I may have changed my vote, there's a lot of these numbers, and obviously the estimate, they seem to be overly inflated, and I would like to see these numbers before we actually voted in the budget committee. I don't know if we can send us back for a better estimate, but...
No, sir, I talked to First Tennessee Development District, in order for us to proceed with this grant, it has to be based on the budget that was submitted at the time of application for the grant.
Commissioner Mark Hill?
I would just like to say that distant photocopy that was in my packet, the only information about this project that was in my packet is pretty much crap. I want, and then on my desk tonight, it was a book of the actual project, and the drawings in this book do not match this schematic wood plan that runs in my packet. I also, you know, I would just call attention to one small item in here, you got like $30 a piece for soap dispensers, you know, those are available every day online for $1,399, and that isn't the only inflated number in this, I can't support this.
Commissioner Keller?
And as I told you, the architect is the one who put these numbers together.
I heard you the first time, thank you, sir.
Commissioner Keller?
Two questions, the $100,000 is coming from what?
The capital reserve fund, this fund that we created, I think there's about $287,000 in that fund, which nothing has been appropriated, we want to take it from that fund for capital projects, that's why we're doing this.
And then the other one, you're coming from fund balance, 92,894, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Then my third one, I'm doing my third question, excuse me. This is supposed to be, in case we have an emergency, you've got a command center, everybody's going to do their work, you can stay, you can take care of everything, correct? Where are you going to make a shower?
Actually, there is a shower in the 911 facility.
Oh, at the 911, we don't, we're not putting one in here.
Commander, there's not room to be in there.
That's the first question, I think, to be up for a week, but then why not the shower? Second thing I would like to say is, why do we have to put the complete amount of money in at this time, since we already have figured out that the numbers are overly inflated? Use the 315, then we can put our money in.
Well, just... You're going to take your position?
No, I'm not taking that position.
Just a point of clarification, this, this is one of those projects, as many of you recall, except the elected commissioners, this is one of those projects that was on the list, has been looking through for quite a while. In fact, Commissioner Brownstein made a proposal for this, it's been kind of in the process for, how long would you say, Commissioner Brownstein? Three years, so it probably is, you know, out of, out of whack in terms of numbers and that kind of thing. The only, the only thing that I would, I can't take that case, I just wanted to add that.
Well, I will add, I talked to the director at Johnson County, they recently went through this, and their project ended up, now, this was a 911 EOC combined, that was $750,000. And you're talking, that was several years ago, these numbers, I don't know how inflated they are, you know, when you look at the cost of building materials and everything, I think it's fairly close overall, of them, there may be individual areas where it's overly inflated, but I can tell you, go to Lowe's and look at what building materials cost.
Well, one of the options that we have, go ahead, Commissioner.
Mr. Smith?
Yes. Trying to do a little animal there, and that moving from over here, upstairs, and that could free up some space for Melissa Mulden, because she's busted at the scene, and she's got a safe in there and everything, which would be an ideal thing. So, we're, we're might have some places around the courthouse or some records here pretty soon, this school soon, and that would be a good move.
And I don't think it's just Melissa's office, you need to, or do you think Johnny's office, they consider a lot of other departments? We have to go before, don't just grab, have any discussion, who needs to go to this project?
One of the options that we can consider is, is to commit or refer it.
What, to mission, this is gone before building grounds committee, and this went through our committee, just Tuesday night.
I know, when I was on that committee, could...
I'd like to add this too, this was actually, this full, not this full commission, but last year's commission, we approved this through a resolution to move forward with this grant, okay? And I'll read this, and I'll thank Abby for her work on this. Motion made by John Willis, second by Nancy Brown, to authorize the county mayor to make and sign an application for community development block grant funds, as permitted, presented in the packet, item number 17. A friendly amendment was made by Mr. Mark Hill to authorize county attorney to change the verdict in the resolution, as presented, presented in the packet to read, be it further resolved if the board understands that matching funds for the project in the amount of 192, 93, 80 will be provided by Carter County under current estimates, if the grants are awarded and accepted by the county commissioner.
What was the date on that commission?
This was from February of 2018, this year.
What did they ask?
It was unanimous vote, winning 4 to 0.
And it was made by John Willis, basically?
Yeah. But I think we're in a great position, 315,000 is being awarded to us for this block grant, it's, I don't know how many applications were submitted, but we're really lucky to be in the position we are. I think if we decide to not go with this, possible grant funding may be cut off, any future grants not made a decision on, and we could be sitting in this position a couple years later, looking to put the bill for 500,000, 750,000.
Mayor, pardon.
I understand that we're on timetable on this.
We are.
And if we...
Commissioner, back to the chairman?
To the committees.
Have to be at the mic.
Mayor, if you get a mic, please, sir.
Okay. Now, I forgot what was next, you know, I said, I think we're on timetable on this, and if we take it back to the committees, I know what you're saying, if we go back to the committees, we are, we could lose this money, you know, and I don't think we're going to lose the money, we've got 315, so that's my opinion.
And I would add, if I may, as the eventual release for those, if I'm wrong, Commissioner Johnson, we will have input on whether or not to accept those bids. That was basically the way it was explained to me, so, we don't know what the final cost is going to be, we will have, they will have to bid out the various parts of this project, it could be more, it could be less. According to First Tennessee Development District, Lance Lowery, I thought of him today, maximum we can deviate from that submitted budget is 25%, that's either higher or lower. And even then, we start getting into some tough areas. This is a project that I think is very much needed, as Commissioner Campbell, he talked about the flood of '98, they had zero room basically to work here, we divided all of the county, the current EOC, which had no heating, no ventilation, you can see about six people in there, maximum, for any extended period of time. This will bring us up in an area where it leaves... This will bring us up in an area where it leaves somewhat prepared to deal with a major incident on the beach.
Question on the motion. Question on the motion, if you're second. Second question on. Second by Commissioner Love. Hold on.
This is for the question.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I don't know what I'm voting on right now. Please forgive me.
The question on the motion actually stops it immediately, and you have to take a vote on the question on the motion that stops debate, and then the next step will be vote on the motion.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
No, that's good. Do you think that's chairman Garland?
No, I was just, the motion is to take $100,000 from the Capital Improvements Fund, which was created this past year, 92,000 and change coming from an assigned fund balance to approve for these matching grant money.
Can you put that forward?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
I'll say.
Second, Commissioner Trigg. Any discussion on the motion? Have I been down those roads? I see that. Call the board, please. Thank you for your work, Chairman Garland, on this. I'm sure about. May I be, Mr. Smith, do as well. Yes, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, and I mean, this was on, this was on top of that building grounds project list, and you mentioned that, that's something that we try to move forward to. I hope we're moving in the right direction with this. Some money coming from fund balance, and I know that's, well, nobody wants to do that, but I think this is a good deal we're getting, and I'm glad to watch out tonight.
Commissioner Culler.
Just to make a statement, that my hand was raised long before the motion just stopped the discussion. Thank you.
I'm sorry I couldn't see you, and I apologize for that. Maybe I need to get three eyes up here, too. Four. Right? Okay, moving on. See, building grounds, I think, next. Could you take a five minute? Yes, sir. Thank you. Let's beg it in, Dr. Ward. Okay. Thank you, sir.
The way you just said it, that's.
Building grounds report. Building grounds, can you hear me, Mr. Johnson? Mr. Trigg. We've got any building, we was getting the next meeting. Okay, the next committee, the next committee is, by this. Education Committee.
The Education Committee, there's a five-year plan that's being in the works, and I don't know if Mr. Ward is still here, Dr. Ward, or if Danny Ward, if he'd like to speak about our five-year plan and work this way. And I know one of the things, salaries and wages is still a big concern. Care of professionals right now, a new person can be hired in and make the same amount as someone that's been working for 25 years. I know that's a very big concern in the future. So that was something of concern. Violations for handicap, there was a survey done by Mr. Gary Smith, there was 4,000-plus violations, so they're looking at ways to improve. We are also committed to having a field trip that I'd like to invite everyone to tomorrow at noon. We will meet here and get on the bus, and travel and meet the people from Kingburg Elementary, Hunter Elementary, Unika High, and Unika Elementary, so that we can talk to them and look at the buildings, facilities there. So I'd like to invite anyone that's interested in going and seeing what's out there, if you've not been to those schools, it's a great opportunity. Our next meeting on December 3rd, there was talks about being at Falcon High School, that's now going to be changed and going back on your calendar. We will be here instead, that principal's going to be out that day and not available to be there with us, so we want to meet here instead, same time, 6 o'clock. And we'll make plans to change to see Falcon another time. Anything you'd like to add?
I have to read, we have sort of a private plan, so. I'm sorry, I just want to go to the field trip, to meet with our senior school, and so if you guys know what I feel, if you want to come out to senior school, you know, we're very welcome.
Tucker Ward, anything to add?
Have you announced what your vote was?
Field trip, yes, and I've got it everywhere. But also, I'd like to extend that to the school, I'm sure they're know their about it as well, the four members.
Yeah, we have, we have, we've got a lot of bus drivers, so, and they're on our mountain, we have eight passengers, so if you're running that area, if you're driving, it'll be, it'll be here, and then we're going to get back on, and we're going to, you know, I'll be there. We'll start the herd, first, you can take it, and then we'll come back down.
Okay. Any questions? Yes.
What date was that again?
The field trip?
Yes.
That's tomorrow at noon. We'll meet downstairs, the parking lot.
You go back, buzz.
Thank you. Thank you.
Move back up, building grounds, Mr. Richardson.
We were in the middle of a project, concerning the heat, a four-inch property across the street, with the glasses and building, and also potential labor, and I think Mr. Johnson's going to come out and give the report on that, since he's, he's been on this committee inherently, and he's going to go ahead and discuss it. But the wind pane, the glass, he made them in the paint, have been donated, basically really for labor, or can work with kind of glaze.
Mr. Johnson, do you have a good enough?
Yeah, I'll speak on that, actually.
Okay. Commissioner, have an out the report, that's great. Teamwork.
I have team.
I have team.
to be discussed and evaluated, of the glaze and the wind in the project at the UT Extension Office. And I basically don't experience working for federal government, doing the same thing in projects of restoration. And I had made mentions within this project, but we have a donor for material, the glaze, and they had, I believe, proposals that were submitted to install the glaze, and I'm going to work back in. It was in the 2,300, 2,500.
2,380.
Mark?
2,380, I think.
2,380?
Yeah.
2,380, that's the simplest thing in the world. Here's the root, true facts. Number one, you've got historical building. Anything that you do to the exterior, particularly, that has the possibility of changing the aesthetics, the outside aesthetic inside of it, you have to go through the Historical Commission, which is chaired by the city, which, that's in the entire part of jurisdiction. And that's an item that was not considered as corporate to be done, because remember how old those windows are? They are the spouts, that's the crossbars through the tines of ice cream, into a 150-plus year old house. Some of those spouts, they're just complete, they're just later by way down, they have no support, they're rotten, they're dry, they're not, so if you get a good contractor in here, it's not aware of the site, and what those windows fall apart, then you're going to go in and replace them. Let me tell you, that is expensive, extremely expensive, okay? So that's a non-go project, we're going to be looking into it in more depth, particularly in the next 30 days. And it was mentioned by one of my fellow commissioners that, with more than likely, we'll ask for a tour with the chair of the Historical Commission from the city, where we can make our recommendations on how we proceed with. You go, you think you want to?
Now, you basically covered it. I did receive, Higgins painting was the one that, we got a second estimate, we received an estimate last year, probably around, get some or something like that, I forget the company, it was around 3,500 bucks, this one came in at 2,350, and that was to include labor and material, and excluding the glass, so these folks were actually going to put the paints in, do the glazing of the windows, probably apply two coats of paint also.
But along with that, after reading the scope placed on the proposal, that I want to raise attention to also, remember, lift paint is present, the only type of, and you have to do an evaluation of that lift paint, because they go in and start doing, taking out, coughing for previous installers, are spacking, are glazing, and it had been painted on for lift paint, then we're in violation. As a matter of fact, contractor has the right to come back and pursue legal action for renting. So that's why I would go and take another 30 days to get it down the line, to see which is the proper way to go. Okay, because it may be, it could come down where they say, Historical Commission says you have to get an AE that is experienced in restoration, and do a small amount of design to make presentation to them, or they have to build up the guidelines of the State Historical Commission, which is extremely, they're extremely hard, and it's nothing easy about it.
So Higgins, they had done work, I think, on his courthouse also, and that was the contractor that went there. Yeah, if we can work that out, I'd be happy to help, about each other's side.
Well, the other items from building ground, we had, we had a project that was presented, well, I presented the project to a fellow commissioner because of the way of the alignment of our committees were, we had two standing committees meeting at the same time, different policies prevented a lot of us from attending each other's region. And that was the apartment block at the front of the Workforce Development on Stone Creek is in total disarray. There are large hot dogs, we have complaints of loss of property damage due to the condition of the apartment block. The commissioner also had the roads superintendent to go and do a estimate, and to look and see what had to be done there. And in size, the whole total for the road department, minus the amount it takes for restryting, was about $109,000.
$106,000.
$106,000 dollars for our own apartment. I'm in the process of giving other proposals, just to be able to keep everything straight and hung down the line, because I guarantee you'd be a lot more. That would be going in and treating the surface, first correcting all the mud holes with craters and where the asphalt has gatored and burnt up, which has dragged the car through and damaged the other penny. But as to correcting all of them, they come in in two different lifts. One is an inch and a half lift of asphalt aggregate, which is, I want to say, an inch large, and then a final, as we call it, a wire surface, which is a real fire, you have on the highway. And that's not what we'd call an extreme emergency, because the asphalt plants for the state for us is shut down at present time, normally does not reopen until the, and it depends on your mean temperature, but normally it's around about the March, April timeframe, before you can get any asphalt left, so that'll be the first startup, so we have a couple of months to go. We've added that to our already list of projects that we're looking into. There was discussion on the EMA EOC, there are a lot of things about this that I hadn't been saying, and I'm going to say one, you know, I haven't expired due to this field. Mike, you heard my feeling, I designed that, thank you. No, I'm just kidding, the AE firm did. The, we, we did pass a resolution that was a full of money, funds probably. And when I started looking at the estimates, from my experience in engineering service in the building, I said, that was unbelievable. That equals to $211 dollars a square foot for inside finish. This does not have anything to do with the exterior whatsoever, it's in place. And then when I acquired with the AE services, and I'm going to call five, they are a professional architectural firm, regardless of what some of your fields are, I have been the project manager over multiple, multi-billion dollar projects for federal government, which every one of these architects have worked for me at one time or another, high stake or ham, decent lunch, screwed, bombed, melted, everyone, and I know, did the work in the county. And they are a rep, but they're also like a term, they'll defend you whether you kill or not, because you have that right. And when you were told that I'm going to do certain things, that's all you're going to do. All right? When I came in to establish the base of this project because of the estimate, it was just after the new, our mayor took office. In that office, records were kind of what happened to them, but there was none in the office that gave you any information whatsoever concerning the project. So, and working with the EMA director, and there was a meeting in which the mayor and myself, the EMA director, met with First Tennessee Development District, they have been named as the project manager. Okay? Basically, that all you do is the county is provide the funds. We do have some voice, but it's very, very limited. The estimate that you see on there, that's the most beautiful thing I've ever seen in my career. We had had problems before with Commissioner Groundstock, myself, when we were working on the entry project and courthouse security project, with the same AE firm, is to say, okay, you're telling me it's that amount of dollars, show me the breakdown of the estimate, where you come up with it, where we can have a good one, a positive feeling, that you never have to come back before, before additional funds. All right? And then, you know, it was related to us, but we just don't like to do that. I just don't know, architect draws anything that can tell you within 10% what the cost is going to be, or you're not worthy of installing. Neither can anybody witness to that. So the estimate that was placed on the estimate was a guess based on nothing, the best rule of the bunch. The first drawn, if you see in your package, was what they assembled just for that space of 2,400 square foot. Since that, we had went in and worked with our EMA director, and looking at what the services is to be provided to the county and to this commission and to the citizens, which would be highly functional and usable. Now, the space, in my opinion, is a little bit larger than what would be necessary, but if you cut that little bit off, it would. it would be wasted. Because there's not really a full function or another part of our government would be there to use that. And it is an open forward space. So all you're dealing with is some interior walls, ceiling finished, heat, air conditioning, electrical. That's the main portion of the work that has to be performed. We done that twenty-five, this was the twenty-five percent preliminary that you had the packages that you seen. I'll show you from the front. That's only preliminary. The estimate will be the footprint of what the interior is going to be. You have to lock it in. You actually start doing your different branch of design, such as your electrical, your mechanical, your electronics finishes. So the next time we'll get to review this, if that is seventy-five percent schematic draw or seventy-five percent complete norm, and I've asked the A E to provide a more thorough breakdown on estimate to make sure. Yet, don't have a good one, a positive feeling whether that number is good or yes, for sure.
I'm sorry, I hurt your feelings, Mr. Johnson. But do you know if this ever went in front of Landings Only at all in the process?
I don't have that knowledge. I don't think it did. Chris, just get in on it. It's something that we have, it's been a learning curve for even myself, to go in and try to rebuild from the original, from the time of it coming before us commissioners. And I'm warning, when they come in again with documents, want to go ahead and give permission to sign for grants, listen up what's in the grants and who is in control. The second meeting that the mayor and I made and the E M A director, we had then another meeting. This is one that the representative of the state of Tennessee. Turns out, they're the ones that granted the grant. And they just come up here to, more or less the general conditions, to coordinate with the project manager, which is the First Tennessee Development District. And it has to do with labor costs and making sure they abide by federal labor laws and the general requirements of the government. The next thing is, the money amount that you see there a total of five-hundred, five-hundred-some thousand was the total project. Five-hundred-seven thousand dollars is actually the total price of this project. And that means on the matching.
Is this the project this is going to?
Yeah, the time that you give the five-hundred-thousand, and you start subtracting such things as the A E fees, which, and I can tell you now, the A E fees basically is about two percent less than what the norm is. A E firms normally, if you're less than a million dollars in project costs, is basically around about ten percent fee for the A E design. But the six percent on the, and you get down to, that's in a twenty-seven, twenty-eight thousand mark. But then, because of First Tennessee Development as its project manager, they get twenty-one thousand right off the bat. And that's twenty-one thousand, and I feel this, with experience, I found out all the project that I think is the biggest waste in the world, but that's part of that process. No changes could be made to this. Like you had, Rector Smith said, "You have to stay within a certain boundary and guarantee it's going to be watched." I'm going to shut it out. If it looks like it is going to rain, I'm going to scream wolf. But that's, that's a lot of cost for just being prepared for just one incident. And I have my reservations and personal preference that's even worthy of that. Now, the total overall, we are getting somewhere in matching funds. We're going to be spending between thirty-six percent and forty-one percent of the cost of this project even though it's on the rent. For right now, if we're looking at a hundred and ninety-two thousand, which you approved, and then I sit back in normal man occupation, and say, "God, the bones for a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, what could it be able to do?" But we are making out with more space. As it progresses, I'll give another thing. Do you have any, is any of you have any questions?
This was discussed at building the grounds you guys have had this conversation and everything. I'm curious of that. You guys have talked about this before.
Yeah, we've talked about it. It was amazing that, what I found the condition that the new administration had walked into, totally nothing. But there's nothing left there for any history, any information whatsoever. And that wasn't the only thing that I'd like in that knowledge. I mean, you know, that was disgraceful that I seen the office over. Do you need?
But I think the point that Commissioner Garland was making is building the grounds, worked with this project for, saying, for three years, I think, at least three years. We brought them back to the table for at least three years. We beat it around for at least three years, just like we have many in the project. And tonight, we passed it seventeen-seven. Maybe it's a learning process, I guess.
But it is, you know, the only option, you went back and said, you know, we're the one. We are still liable for some fees because contracts have been lit. We had to sign the official A I document with the architects. They had provided us a twenty-five percent point of merit, and they're in the process of working out. So it's not a giveaway. We have no other funds invested in it than that. But then, that means it's a loss. Now, the dress that has been on the books for three years, it has. I've been on building the grounds longer than that. There was no discussion, and we go back through the records, as to the operational function of this grant whatsoever as to what it entailed. The most that was ever said by us on this floor, when the grant, the request came out to allow the current administration at that time to sign for the grant, that was the largest extent ever asked. So now, we get to learn. Commissioner Frager?
I just want to point out one thing that I think we discussed at building the grounds. That fee doesn't include any of the hardware fixtures in the facility I have in it. Like computers and desks and?
No, no, that is not. This is totally just building cost. Anything of such features as, like you say, computers, large screens, any of that part. We will put the hardware in, the wiring in itself, and arrange for it. But connection and purchase of those items does not include in there.
So we're basically going to be on the look for more after that?
Well, we'll have to, that's one of the things that evaluation we have to do, Commissioner, is want to see what we have presently that can be used for a new facility, for the O C. And I think it's all, you get in a building project like this to see whether you're going to be able to survive it. But I think with watching the design and the statement and everything, I think we're going to be all right.
Commissioner Garland?
Just another comment. In February, twenty-four people sit on this board and made a unanimous decision to approve this and knew the county was going to be on the line for a hundred and ninety-four thousand.
That wasn't reasonable. You're correct. But they had, really, they didn't have, and they never had been offered sufficient information given any other conclusion whatsoever to make a decisive decision.
We made that decision, I think.
Well, I think we, I think we discussed this thoroughly. We voted on it seventeen-seven at last. In the future, if they come back through the process and want more money, we're going to vote again.
We have, Commissioner Frager has to say that. Yeah, I know, but to help you.
Go ahead. Karen, if I can say, I already know. Eddie Woodman, I don't know against the bill. He just, I have never seen nothing before you write a blank check and then go get a bid. I mean, that, to me, is just totally backwards. I mean, because if you know you've got five-hundred-thousand dollars if I'm a company bidding, I'm going to bid for what you're voting for. I mean, that's just, to me, you put it out for a bid, you get what it is, then you vote on the money. To me, this is just backwards. I'm not against the bill. Just, to me, the process sometimes not. It's like, here's you a check, and I'll spend what you can.
One more, what can I say, sir?
That's, that's just, that's why I wouldn't know. It wasn't against the bill. It's the simple fact that I've never seen you vote against something that you don't know which one counts.
We've already voted on this, Mr. Frager. One more question, then we're going to move on. Thank you, Commissioner.
I, well, it was more of a statement, really. As I recall, the way this was sold initially, we were admonished that we needed to allow the county to seek grant funding. And there was no guarantee that we would get the grant. And that if we got the grant, there was a dollar match and blah, 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 identified print. Which is why I made that friendly amendment those months ago, that the county was aware that there was a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars required on this dollar match on this grant. We have heard ad nauseam from a gentleman who will remain unnamed, about a pipeline of grant funding coming into this county. But at no time have we heard about the cost to the people of this, this funding, this grant funding. With our free lunch numbers, we shouldn't be paying more than a five or ten percent match on anything. And this is a forty percenter. And unfortunately, it was given, it was granted.
It was, it was granted through a resolution. Commissioner Garland stated that, that's right. We have the resolution. We need to move on.
Thanks.
No further, thank you, Mr. Trump. Thank you, sir. Education Committee? That's your management? That's you, Commissioner Johnson? Please don't bring that over. If you would, too, just to have a review.
Couple of others, what's already in the minutes that you have in your package concerning the meeting of the project manager. May the fourth of one, please noted and scheduled. Committee voted to move our meeting date. We now meet on the first Wednesday of every month at eight-thirty. First Monday of the month. We meet on the first.
That's the first Wednesday of the month. That's the noon. That's the noon, yeah. It was the first Monday of the month.
We presently met on Wednesdays at eight-thirty, the first Wednesday of the month. Committee voted to move it to the first Monday at eight-thirty. It was backed up to that. And we appreciate if you'd like to attend. It was the first Monday. Second item, and it is for all commissioners. It was presented by the Superintendent Stuves. I noticed it made in detail on the Education Committee report of the item number five, which is concerning the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen budget and operations. And it's, you should read it and skewer it. We have now a service. We're ninety days away from forming our calendar to start the next budget review process. It starts in February. Am I correct? So February, this is November. And as numbers in their documents right now shows that we are on the Stuves side in excess of a million in the red. That's what I think. Budget meeting and all the rest of it. It's not going to be a bad road. You want to address it fine, you know, just keep that in mind every time we leave. More excellent.
They may have trouble with a solution. I addressed it in the committee manager. That computer just locked in. That's Education Committee. I think this will be addressed it. Coming into this next year, we have fixed expenses that includes insurance, the step raises. There's like four or five different categories. And I think approximately, and this is approximately number of those, talking about the fact that we're looking at some work coming next year. We're going to have one point three million dollars. Last year, we come in one point one million. Last year, we were lucky, we had some extra revenue that come through. One of those, one of those other categories is seventy students at approximately seventy-five-hundred thousand dollars a head. Do the math on that. It's around a half a million dollars. So, you know, it's, it's going to be a tough budget cycle, but, you know, we have been working with the board. We went through the first six, maybe eight pages of our budget. In this next workshop, we will go through the next seven or eight and conclude that little session we have with the board in those workshops coming up. Give them a good idea of where the money is and what line items and category of the budget. So, basically, are there any questions? Ask, and I'll try to answer. Thank you.
I have no further, Mr. Trump. Health and Welfare?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Health and Welfare, you should have the minutes in the package on the October second, two thousand eighteen meeting. Thank Commissioner Jenkins for finishing those out. We had a little rough go of being able to take track of those four meetings, but hopefully we have reached them solved. Couple of items coming from Health and Welfare, not for a vote, for you to know. We deferred one item that was on the agenda for Jack Buckles, who is chief of Stone Creek Development Fire Department, to kind of talk about his plan or need for voluntary fire departments to work together. Jack had conflicts, so he removed it to the next meeting. One item, which was brought to the committee by Julian Reese, who's the director of Car County Drug Prevention Program, who had been working with Smith and Sheriff's Department, to find a trailer that they could use for a project, which is called Hidden in Blind Sight, which actually, inside that trailer would be a teenager's room, and they would instruct parents on where they could hide drug, heroin, or drugs. Believe it or not, even in your own home with your kids, if they're into that scene, you would be surprised the hiding places that they've found. So it's a good project. We deferred it to Attorney Hardin because since they are a government entity, we cannot give the county a piece of county property. So we're talking about different options that we may be able to permanently loan that piece of equipment to them for their purposes. A project which we all agree to. Health and Welfare also discussed for the coming year, out of six areas or six projects, three that we wanted to pursue. Our number one priority is to address health and care for county employees, looking at traditional versus innovative models. Those of you on Health and Welfare Committee have already seen the email from me today regarding a program that will be headed up by Rosetta Health out of Virginia on February the twentieth, to talk about innovative ways of restoring a reasonable cost to counties and other entities, the cost of healthcare. You may know that Washington County, Johnson City, Greenville are already self-insured. In fact, when Congressman Phil Rowe, who is the mayor of Johnson City, he helped spearhead that movement. They have their own clinic, they're self-insured, they pay their own bills, and has worked pretty good satisfying, understand the same thing for Washington County and Green County, who have ongoing clinics for employees. If you want to go to the February twentieth meeting, you'll need to contact me and let me know so we can get you on the list. I'll have specifics about that meeting, when, where, times, et cetera. A meeting with Taylor Finley, who is the principal, invited us to be a part of this seminar service. And hopefully, we will firm up when that will take place. For those of you wishing to attend, there is a book that I can get for you. It's entitled, "The CEO's Guide to Restoring the American Dream: How to Deliver World-Class Healthcare to Your Employees at Half the Cost." Halfway through it, it's a great read. I know Commissioner Hill's got one to leave. I know Commissioner Hill's got one to leave, Commissioner Carr has one. Uh, if you'd like to see a copy or get a copy, if you'll let me know, I will talk with Taylor and see if we can get a few more copies. So reserve February the twentieth for that particular program. The other.
Might I have an hour to turn for a bit of this? So that he can have a look and be able to.
Uh, sir, he is certainly welcome to come. This, uh, so that county employees who sit in the audience or appear to commission. We're not voting to change what we're doing. This isn't a decision, this is a fact-finding mission. So don't go out of here saying, oh, they're going to change our health benefits, try to do something different. Don't do that, because that's not the intent. It's the intent to explore all probable ways of reducing our healthcare costs while also providing our county employees with the best healthcare available. So it isn't, it isn't proposing anything. It's a fact-finding mission. Um, so yes, John can come, I have a problem with that, we can get him on the list. But it's innovative, and if you'd like to view some of the videos, if you'll send me an email, I'll be happy to provide those to you. Health and Welfare, any members of our organization. The other two topics that we, uh, want to address, number two was the opioid epidemic in our region, particularly in Carter County. Um, I don't think many of you know the seriousness of the problem that we face, not only in Carter County, but in this region. I talked with folks in Johnson County, in Unionwood County, Washington County, Mayor Joe Brandy, who are all experiencing it. And we all don't have all the pieces of puzzle on how serious this problem is. So it would give us an opportunity to work, hopefully, with our fellow regional commissions to explore the problem. How much of the problem do we actually have? What are some of the theories in the area, including law enforcement, DCS, et cetera, that are actually focusing on that? I know Julian Reese's program, the Carter County Drug Prevention, aspects is also addressing this. But I think we need to raise the awareness about what we have as a problem in the opioid epidemic. The third thing, which kind of goes along with the opioid epidemic, is food accessibility for kids and families. I don't know, I'm sure that the sheriff's folks, when they walk in to a home, DCS, or even EMS, anything, uh, and find individuals who are overdosed, okay, you will also find hungry kids. And kids that are bewildered about why mom and dad are doing these. I know that at our meeting, Commissioner Hill spoke up, that he has been contacted by folks in, um, around the mountain about, what about food pantry? What about food accessibility for people? We, we know we have a problem. It's why we already serve breakfast and lunch in Carter County schools. It's why TCL also does a program in the summer for the kids in neighborhood. It's also why we have a pilot program, uh, through Carter County schools to do the same thing. So we can't solve the problem alone, but working together, not only as county and city governments, but particularly outside agencies, we can, we can address this. So those are three posts out for the year. So hopefully you'll, uh, join us in becoming more aware of those things. And you're also, for this person number one priority of looking at traditional versus alternative opportunities for healthcare providing for county employees, you'll also take an interest. That's good.
Thank you, Doctor.
Sure. Sure, go ahead.
All right. Uh, I've been talking with the eight of the county mayors in our little region. And, uh, Representative Hill has talked about maybe the resolution we passed, uh, the autopsy thing, or he's going to carry it to the heel, as he said. So hopefully we can get some help on that. And I'll, I'll make mayors sort of remember we're in agreement on that, that what we proposed, they're wanting our kind of, they want to copycat our resolution. We'll go ahead and fit it up on the autopsies. And on the second thing, I've been talking with some city, the city, and on the insurance. Uh, we need to try to get something worked out together. We can get all our employees, whether you can or you can't, but, uh, they're interested in talking as well to get all our, our employees on the same, uh, insurance. Maybe we can get a, you know, a cheaper policy. I think they don't, they don't, they've got just very few that can afford family coverage, and I'm sure we're the same way. So we're interested in, uh, getting together maybe and trying to work out something, so just advise that one.
Thank you, Mayor. And certainly I've already talked with the city manager, Estes, and we will make that available for the city to attend this as well. I've been informed about it, so, and I think it is something that we can work all together. As you know, our two hundred and fifty-eight employees, we only have five that can afford to have a dependent or spouse on their policy. Just too expensive, however. We've got to come up with one.
They have twelve, they have twelve, I think they got about two seventy or something. So we're all on the same boat, so hopefully we can get something worked out, get our people some, uh, cheaper, cheaper insurance, so thank you.
I'm sure it'll stay back here. Uh, I don't know why your minutes aren't in your packet, mine aren't. I approved them the other day, so I'm not sure what happened to them, but, uh, Benny's got his new truck, so that's all working well. They moved it to the garage. He did a lot of electrical things for the, uh, air, what do you call it? Air conditioner and air, air pumps and so on, so he's got all that taken care of, so they got moved into the garage. Benny met with Brad, and, uh, he worked through his budget, he was able to look at Lundy and the budget to, uh, two part-time people. So that's why he came back and tried for two people for Lend heal. So that's working real well, so, uh, appreciated, glad, and I just want you to worry things are good, everything's working well. And I'll make sure that those get put in your packet next time.
Thank you, Governor.
Oh, there is that, okay, I missed it. I got five bags, thank you.
Nice.
Thank you.
I've got a pair of, of the game, it's chairman, then that you're here, chairman.
Well, I'm chairman, I don't know what that says.
State, yeah.
Doctor Ward, did you have a question, something?
Yes, sir.
Uh, on this insurance.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, go back, one question. As, uh, when you look at the self-insurance proposal, is there a self, uh, or is there a stop loss attached to this self-insurance?
Yes, there is. That will be something that we'll need to consider. At the, um, symposium or the seminar that they'll hold, they talk about it as well, others involved. Um, Sheriff reminded me, as long as he, Parish reminded me that when Congressman Rowe came by Sheriff's Office before election, he reminded them. They got on this topic, he reminded them, yeah, but whenever.
It happened with, I believe, Johnson City.
Yeah, so. Right, we thought we would use his expertise at some point in time to have him come and speak on, on how they did that. Maybe it was a different session or something, but yes.
Okay, would you have a day to give?
It is the twentieth of February, and I will let everybody know exactly where and when. And I know, I understand, um, I got a note today from, uh, Commissioner Prager indicating it depends on how it falls within the day that some people will be able to attend, and some will hopefully have those dates and times out to here very soon. Yes, sir.
The resolution we've actually lost back for a long time, it's all the issues.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, I've been going over agreements. And it runs pretty good for about three years. Average about sixty-one, sixty-two. And before that, it wasn't down to twenty-two thirds. But the contract we signed, and it says that tonight's the training, and anything we go over sixty-two or three, they're going to start charging sixteen hundred dollars.
Eighteen hundred.
Nineteen hundred, okay.
Eighteen. So two hundred dollars means a lot for a county.
So the county attorney is talking over there, and he's going to come up next, and he can give a report on what he got from about that resolution.
Well, and remember, you may remember when this program started, I think we shared with you the numbers back in the early two thousands. We were doing seven, nine autopsies, now we're sixty-two, sixty-four. Uh, and I think it also, um, to err on the side of sheriff here or not, because I agree with you. I think it's appropriate that the chief law enforcement holder in the county should be able to talk with the DA and make that determination whether there needs to be an autopsy. And I think that's one of the things that, I hope we have, we have the people that's creating the bill, deciding what the bill is by the number of autopsies they're doing.
So it was bad legislation four years ago, if you remember, I spoke to you about it. We just sherched across state trying to stop it, but it didn't even stop, and now we're four years later, and we're going to pay the price. It's bad legislation, so we can back up and get something up.
And I appreciate Mayor Marnett's comments about these discussions with county mayors that they recognize. We got a problem, and I think this is one where to talk to the rest and solve it. You can answer?
Thank you, sir. Law enforcement?
Uh, Mr. Parker. Uh, like Mr. Cover, I can probably take care of the issues from here. I have no minutes for my meetings, but I have lots of notes that I can. Uh, first of all, Commissioner Johnson made, we agreed he's going to make comments throughout the time to the evaluation of the old facility. Whether or not it should be remodeled or destroyed, uh, this is important, destroyed, uh, make this one immensely action. But the cost to have it remodeled would be probably higher than actually constructing the building. And, uh, they decided that we did take a tour, and I've been up there several times before. I've been retired since two or four, and it hasn't changed any, the mode, the air quality, uh, the condensation of water, the ceilings in all the thirds and fourth ounces, our damage is probably detrimental to health to anyone who has to work in that building. Uh, I am not familiar with the status on acquiring, uh, evaluation, what agency should be probably to do that. That would be mandated, did that prior to that, as many kinds of estimate for, uh, remodeling or reconstruction, I believe, in my last. But other than, other than that, that's all that we can come up with, so up till. We do have an evaluation, we're in limbo, you just have to put on tape and look at it again later. Uh, now in reference to our meeting at the jail, uh, one of the main issues that we brought up was the regular usage by our constable. Uh, we had, we were represented, the constable were represented by Jim Bowman, their attorney, and, uh, three or four, uh, constituents with it. And we did, uh, discuss the requirements that they are obligated to fulfill in order to be a constable, to work the road. And also presented that they had complied with the mandated or mandatory performance that they need to do to carry weapons. And it's something that we perform off or do. However, it was brought up that they were only getting approximately forty hours of in-service training, which included, uh, firing range and flash training activities. And other, other data materials which they needed for, you know, in order to be a police officer. Uh, we, uh, did hear negativity and positive, remarkably, against and for our constables. Uh, I know that, uh, where I had been told, I had asked everybody about whether or not the law enforcement committee could have taken the action and make a vote on whether or not they could or could not use their radio frequency, which my understanding of is we do not have the authority to do that, to make that decision. But, uh, also, uh, I'll make this short, I can't, I'm a retired secretary, and I've worked every year, Sheriff Watson. And he's like a brother, a good friend of mine. And I know that he is recent officer for the community, everyone in the community, there's a lot of people. And, uh, like certain things, uh, problems arise from subordinates, and, uh, it doesn't necessarily go downhill, it climbs up to the leader. If there's a problem, someone has to answer for, uh, issues that were caused by lack of training, uh, it's so and so on. Well, forget that, is, uh, you can play it safe and play it wisely, yet you do go with, uh, your training. And, uh, your officers, with the chance to share, everyone and their, is qualified. And you're certainly qualified, so you can make sure that most things will go well. And I agree with it. However, I actually, I retired from the highway patrol, I was police chief in that city. We had three officers who were not police certified, they had not gone through the academy. But they did receive and were qualified with all qualifications that our constables have made, forty-hour training, including firearms, radio weapons, so and so. Well, I'm, uh, I go by my gut, mainly feelings, and I do use a little common sense and technology, but we had three officers, reserve officers for four years who were not qualified. They drove a patrol car, they made arrests, they made evidence of guns, and, uh, no issues. I'm not going to say that that would not happen here. But I, I've taken chances with people many times, that I'm not saying that Sheriff said I'm agreeing with him, how he wants to do it, that office department. I'm behind him, as far as that goes, so I'm not going to make any calls about that. But, uh, getting back to the police department, uh, once more, like I was there four years, and we did have officers on the road, we were, they had not gone through the office. And we were reserve officers, and they did find out. Uh, I've lived in Carter County since I was there, except a trooper over here, and, uh, no issues, despite any problems with any law enforcement agency. And I know, on occasion, you have some, I'll say good, but people do make mistakes that are unaccountable. Uh, but you don't hold, you don't throw the whole bushel of apples away just to have one bad apple. That's all I can say about all that, but, uh, I have worked with people, like I said, for thirty-four years. I was military police for sixteen years, had radio, equipped with gun, badge, all that stuff. It takes a special person to get tied down to using all this equipment and do, and do it in a well manner. Uh, these, you know, they can do that too, and I said that, I'm sorry to take your overtime, but these people get out, and they work, they don't get paid. Like I said, we all, they all, I made mistakes. But, uh, I've seen times when I had to be by myself. Uh, I want to give you the location in this county, but where I need help, and itself, I wouldn't do it out. And I don't know if I had to be a constable or anyone of a far fight, someone to come around with a radio, but then I'm not back at it, so. Uh, I don't know if the commission, full commission passed to vote on this or not. I'm going to close and leave it up to the commission to decide whether or not they're aware to take this issue here. That's basically all I have.
Thank you, Chairman Prager. I have been in this law office since the decision was made. I have constantly talked with our attorney, trying to see if this body had any legal responsibility whatsoever in terms of. whatsoever in terms of the constable and the sheriff. And I've repeatedly been told that this body does not have any direct supervision and or direct authority over any elected official, not just the sheriff, but any elected official. And so there's nothing we can do, except, it's my understanding, and Mr. Harvick can challenge him if he wants to, but it's my understanding that the only control we have is basically what we've talked about tonight, is the budget, I mean, through the committees, and that's the budgetary budget that they bring before us. It is an issue. I've been involved in the issue. That's why I guess there was the law enforcement committee. I've talked to several of the constables on an ongoing basis, and I've told them basically the same thing, that we do not have any legal responsibility for elected officials. And now I'll turn it over to Mr. Harvick here, just a second.
Can I say anything you want to know? I think I've been candid with you all, and I think I've been candid with the sheriff and Mr. Bowman about my position on all this, and it's not my place to tell you all what you can and can't do if you decide to vote on things that's your business. I think the basic positions can be summed up pretty simply. They feel that because the radio frequency is owned by Carter County, that this body can dispose, that the constables use the radio to match what the sheriff says. And the basic position from our end is the county owns all of it, but in every office, we don't vote to say that we can use the copier in the registered deeds office or the computer. We leave that up to the elected official in that office, just like the sheriff's office. He manages the jail, and the county owns the guns and the cruisers, and we don't tell the sheriff to get to drive them or use the guns. That's up to the sheriff. So that's our basic position, and we certainly understand the other issues about training, and I've never questioned the fact that they're meeting their state law requirements. But the bottom line is that the county commission, the only vote, in my opinion, the county commission has to do with constables whatsoever, is whether or not they exist in this county and whether or not they have law enforcement powers. That's it. There's nothing else that this county commission says or does has anything to do with the constable, other than appointing them when there's a vacancy, saying whether or not they exist, and... Those are the three things, essentially, that that's it. You know, I don't feel like the commission can be involved in this area, and if you pit the commission against the sheriff as far as managing the radio frequency for law enforcement purposes, I don't know what injure you. That's simple, I can...
Commissioner Leffler?
Other word, there is your threat. My employer, somebody gave out that, or go, they're about to start a staff, and they can be voted on, but they're way off the radio, but we can't say whether the sheriff is hired or paid the way.
Well, like I said, as simple as I can make it, that they're county, that they're county constables, but they are not county employees, and they're not county officers. We're not supervising, we're not controlling, we don't train them, we don't give them equipment, or should we? They are their own entity, they answer to themselves. They can meet all state law requirements and be constables, and that's great. And I, you know, that's fine, and there's nothing we can do there. And I don't think that the county needs to be in the business of training them, because that's not what we're supposed to be doing. So the issue becomes the radio, and as with all equipment in Carter County, in every office, it's owned by Carter County, of course, but we don't vote to say whether or not people can make copies or use the computers over John Plankton's office. He's got employees, and he manages those folks, and he decides if he just uses one with them. We provide the equipment, we fund for the equipment, and the office owners who are elected manage that, and this is no different.
Sheriff, I think that you would like to speak.
Yes, sir. Here's your problem. I also have reserve officers, and my reserve officers, background check, my reserve officers do a site watch. That's all. They're vetting. Today or this week, I signed a memorandum of understanding of the State Park Service, authorizing them to use up radio frequencies. They've been vetted. Their officers have been vetted. I signed one, two, three weeks ago with the prison system, giving them authorization. I signed it. Every constable, they're an outside agency, they are not an employee of the sheriff's office. I have to sign a form for each and every one of them to use ties in CI radio system. I did, and I will not do that until they're vetted. It has nothing to do with them being constables, it has nothing to do with them not being good guys. It has to do with them getting background check and a site watch to make sure that they're vetted before they have access to your personal information. That's all it is. And when that vetting process takes place, they'll be authorized, just like the prison system, just like the North Carolina State Park system, to use the systems of the sheriff's office. That's all it is. My reserve officer, 120 hours training, 120 hours. That's the issue. Has nothing to do with them constable, not one, I hope. Yes, ma'am?
Are you paying for that?
Yes, the site watch. Yes. Initially, initially, yes, initially, they said they couldn't do it because the training was, in the day, they had jobs, they were living training, and sex, they were living training to the evening, four hour blocks. They said they couldn't afford a site watch, told them it was paper, site watch, and still have no response. It's a vetting process, it's as simple as that. You do not, what makes you think that I would be a good steward of your personal information and the systems across the state of Tennessee? This doesn't just access, I have a sheriff in North Carolina telling me this here, you're also letting them access my information in North Carolina, or in Washington State, or in California. This is a national database of information, and everyone accesses it, is vetted. Background check, and their site watch is done, and that's all it is. One constable, but anyway, that's the issue, and as you said, I have to sign that, I have to sign that form, no next.
And you're saying that you pay for that as well, too?
Yes, one constable.
Mr. Jenkins?
Sheriff, I just have a quick question. I agree with more training than all of that, I do. What I don't agree with, what I can't wrap my head around, is I put myself in their shoes and this commission. We ran under the terms and the agreements for the state, and then we're going to change the rules.
No, 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 this, this has nothing, this is different. Has nothing to do with a constable.
Please stand over until I call him.
I mean, I just, now, I would be all up for this if in three years or two years, if we voted this in as a requirement, future going for future customers, that would be mine, but right now, they've already voted in, they already ran under, that's where I just had the problem, that's where I need to hide.
They can be constables, I've done the deal with them being constables, but they will not access the information within the sheriff's office until they're vetted. If you want to know the truth, one ward, you know, currently are psychiatric patients. Okay? I'm not going to let those people access the information within the sheriff's office until they're vetted, and I'm not going to, that's just as simple, that's all it is. And if you weren't, and if you were not to choose, you would do the same thing.
Sir, I think, I'm sorry, but this is general...
Oh, I'm sorry, I felt strong, and... What's your name, sir?
Scott Wade, Constable District 30. At this time, the way I understand it, I could be wrong, I don't speak the alternative to determine, but we were asking for our radio rights back, which is our lifeline to protect. The NCIC has worked tied to this, is they all? How is that, sir?
It's all the same, it's the system, and I supervise those systems. And I guarantee you, if I told you, "Radio tomorrow, within two hours, somebody will access it, somebody's driving license information," or somebody's watching, or they want to run the trail of history on somebody with the radio, I'd have set monitor that radio all the time to stop that. I don't want to do that.
We have people at our comm center that are putting and directing on how to give information out, how to use the information. Right now, we are pleading for our lifeline back. So if we get out here and get in a altercation in a traffic stop, we've been told we could use our cell phones, but have you ever tried to hold somebody down while you're calling nine-one-one? That is our major concern.
If you will consider the last word... Commissioner Fray?
Just to ask one question of the sheriff. In an emergency, who would have access, if the constable were in a situation like that? Anybody, I don't know, it's my understanding, anybody can access one of those frequencies in an emergency?
Correct. Right now, there's an FBI agent radio, right around there. Emergency happens, I can get radio, can use any trained police officer, notice that. Emergencies, everything goes out the window. You can access and use any radio system you want. If you read the second letter that I sent to the constables, the last thing it says in the interim, in the event of an emergency, you are authorized to use any frequencies along with Carter County Sheriff's Office. Thank you. The week after we got sworn in, is when we got this letter. We were told, the sheriff was asked, "You gonna take their records away?" He said, "No, they're not, why would I do that?" But the week after we get sworn in, they're taking away, that we, the constables have had for 50 years plus, four of them, the last four of them, it hasn't been stretched, and now we certainly have, certainly have a problem with disinformation, I keep talking about. Why wasn't this a problem four years ago? Why wasn't this a problem eight years, 10, 12 years ago? That's, that's what I've been looking at. I, I mean, to my knowledge, we haven't had any complaints about the radio, or any leak in it, perhaps, but there has, where it's... We, we run, we won our elections on basis that we would have communications and do our jobs, what we were elected to do. Then all of a sudden, this comes out, and, you know, a week after we get sworn in, that's not a problem.
Let me, let me say this, I can't do anything about the past. We can't do anything about the past.
Yes, sir.
But we can certainly talk about the future. And I introduce this by saying that last month, in the commission meeting, when this issue came up, I asked our attorney to get with your office attorney, which I understood is going to be Mr. Jim Bowman.
Yes, sir.
And my understanding that took place, but it's still, I'm still being told, that's why it's not on this agenda. But that's exactly why it's not on this agenda, is because I was told by our legal attorney, that's who I have to go to, he's our county attorney, that we did not have any responsibility in this, between the sheriff and the constables. And I understand that, you know, where you're coming from. I had a call today from one of the commissioners this morning to give you an example, to give you an example, asking me if our attorney was right. I have to lean on our attorney, whether he's right or wrong, as long as he's representing me, just like you all are being represented by him.
But I, I do think, if you read that paper, this was exactly by the county commission years ago, that we do have rights right now.
I've heard enough from you, sir, thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Wade.
Commissioner Harvick, correct me if I'm wrong, but the sheriff paid, in order, that out of the county budget, that put those in my building?
Pays a portion of one.
Third, shot, shot your act, right, wait.
Right, like I said, I've been candid with everybody who's asked me about that, and the sheriff knows my position on that, too. I don't think we need to be involved in any training period or pay for it. I just don't. I think the only involvement this commission has is whether they exist, we fill vacancies, and whether or not they have law enforcement powers. That's it.
And as your chair, I'm going to say this, I'm following the advice of our attorney, which we all need to do. Until that's challenged, until something else happens, that's what I have to do. And so...
And that was my first declaration to the meeting, just to start, and that's it, there. If you know, if you're out of your mind, why don't you give them the chance to get there? So I give them an opportunity to get there. Let me ask you a question. Blue, I started today, and I told you I was going to start a police agency. They have a separate authority that I have, this is not what I'm going to follow here, okay? This is about a list of, that's a thought, man, whole thought, and I told you I was going to start a police agency. We're going to volunteer, we're not going to build background on, we're not going to build site watch on, we're not going to get 40 hours of training, I got 40 hours of training with this radio. We're not going to bend the handshake of order, and we're not going to supervise, we're not having supervision. Would you vote yes to do that?
Commissioner, sir, please stand over. That's the second time I'm asking. I respect you, please, and I understand your passion. The next time I'll ask Officer Shale.
You'll have to.
Thank you. Commissioner Carr.
You just said this wasn't on the agenda, why are we spending all this time discussing this?
This is because it's brought up from the floor, as usual, at the end of the meeting.
We're not at the end of the meeting, we're in the middle of the meeting.
No, we're in the committee meeting, I know where we are. I know exactly where we are. Mr. Prophet asked chairman to exit the report. That's how we got where we are, and I just now shut it down. Let's move on.
Parks and Rec, if you have anything, Commissioner Carr?
It may not, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay. Parks and Rec, as usual, the events are impeccable, so... I can go ahead and do the rules by laws if you want.
Go ahead, sir, please.
What's Harvey's model of that? I can quit, just a couple items. So I was approached by a couple commissioners to put on the rules of my laws agenda about the rotation of our full committee times from a 9:00 a.m. meeting time every other month, so a day meeting to a night meeting. What the committee tended to conclusion, what we voted to do, was to bring that to your office. We decided that a commissionership, we decided that for 24. So I'll open up the floor for discussion with it, and here it goes.
Do you want to put that in form of motion with the chairman?
Uh, I don't know, just see where it goes.
Commissioner Fray?
I just don't think it's a very good idea. Probably about 14 of us sit at work every day, constituents can't come during the daytime, it ties up, a lot of employees will be here, we already seen how a common town, shelter and land, but I have more employees, another will be tied up here for the daytime meetings. I just think it's all around, it's a bad idea.
Commissioner Mike? I voted against this in the committee. We have a resolution establishing a 6:00 p.m. meeting time on the third Monday of the month unless there's a holiday, and this thing has come up at least three times in the previous commission, and frankly, people make fun of us for continuing to bring this up. So that's about all I have to say about it. Terrible idea, Michael, terrible idea.
But hey, now, I'm going to say this, as rules of my laws, chairman, each and every one of y'all can approach me in any time and ask me to put something, and I will respect your wishes at any time, and that's my job, so, I know, I know. It's been brought up a few times before, I looked at my...
Further discussion?
Is there motion?
Is that all you have to report, that's Chairman Jenkins?
That's, that's it, that's all. But I have another item, but just we'll make sure that our meetings have pointed it out to put it in your office's hands, with no recommendation. Go on once, then twice.
I'll stay with what I've stated for three years in a row when this has come up. There's a lot of people that can't drive at night, a lot of people that like to come to the meetings, and gave them opportunity to come to the meetings. Yes, there's some people that work here today, they can't come to the... Yes, there's some people that work here in the day, they can't come to that meeting, but they come to the night meeting. If you ran for office, you should have thought about that. You might be meeting here in the day. But I don't, I don't care what way to get to this point in my life. So that's really up to you, but that's my thoughts on it.
Anyone else?
You got hype this maybe works. By the time you think I'm waiting to split the mission.
Still no motion.
All right. We're gonna move on. One more order of business. From the mayor's office, a recommendation from him, the AED policy. We reviewed that in committee and made sure it passed. And it's in front of you in your minutes. Took a peek at it and completed the form of motion to pass it.
Second, my Commissioner Hill. Mike Hill. All favor? All roll.
Commissioner Frager, would you repeat the motion again?
It's to. TCA EED policy, it's in your package. Passage. We reviewed it. The county attorneys reviewed it. Recommendation from my committee is in passing.
Time to vote. Time to vote. I didn't hear Von Cannon and Mr. Trufant.
Didn't hear the motion. It's right here. Are you saying it's not only, or? No, it's just the policy. We had to, we had to set the place to get a grant.
Yes, or no?
Yes.
Field of vote. Motion passed, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, guys.
Anything else, sir?
Nope.
Thank you. County attorney, I'm sorry.
I'll make it.
I'm sorry.
I'll make it really quick. Dominique Committee met, and we filled the beer board vacancies with the following commissioners. Randall Jenkins, Brad Johnson, myself, Travis Hill, Layla Ward, Mike Hill. So I'll initiate from the floor, since myself.
Your second. Second on the motion. Senator Blavens. Any discussion? Commissioner Grinstad.
She needs a motion.
Yeah.
She's actually on that.
I'm on it.
Oh, I thought she made the motion. I'm sorry. Second move, Commissioner Blavens. Motion. Second, my Commissioner Grinstad. All in favor? Go to the floor. All roll. Motion passed.
That's all I really have. And just to let the commission know, I spoke with the county attorney, and we are gonna be putting together a spreadsheet to keep up with all the appointments on all the boards, to make sure all the expired terms, so we can know when one's ending and when one's coming available. Any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Since this is a very unspanned committee, which none of the previous officers are on, don't you think it would be wise to hold a meeting where they can collect their, get their information together, so when here in the next place?
On the beer board?
Yeah.
I think that would be a sharp idea.
What was that again?
To set a meeting time for the additional meeting to establish.
Very, so there's a great deal of liability to each individual that's on this.
Mr. Moon. I can motion, I can make a motion to have a training session. When you're on, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Second. Commissioner Blavens. Any discussion?
Who's gonna add the time?
Who's gonna pull the time? Who's gonna do the instruction?
Well, I think the county attorney is leaving most important because it has to deal with the state statute as to, has the requirements and the laws concerning that, and also make the established rule. We do.
I'm last year coming over, I think, so. County attorney. I mean, it's not an actual committee meeting, there's no business making a click right now. It doesn't necessarily have to be an open, open debate, it can be whatever y'all wanna do. I, I thought there was, it's, it's got three or four members still on, when you were on before.
I was on it. I'm not on it.
Oh, I thought you were.
I think it's Brad, Randall, and Mike. Re, re, all of us. Brad and Randall, maybe only two.
Mr. Neil.
Our resident.
There's two left, there's two left over, though.
Yes.
Well, I can probably help with the process, I can, I can help with jobs from the process.
No, I mean, I'm happy to have a session with them and cover the law and everything that's required. They, they make it frequent, you know, I think we've been in it for two years. But I, you know, I'm happy to work with all of y'all. Instead of any time, if you want me to pick something, I will. Otherwise, we can, y'all can pull them up yourselves, decide what you wanna do. And I'll make myself available to you. It's my job.
Well, the small package that has copy of TCA that gives them all of their authority, but the rules that they have to go by.
Sure.
Because they have to be understanding that you don't get to go in or make a rule. You can only judge what the rule is already on the table.
Sure, yeah. There's a whole receipt task manual on it. I'll give, there's one of y'all in manual, and I'll give you the resolutions that specifically deal with Carter County. And I have to do it at your all's pleasure. But y'all, tell me when you wanna do it, and we'll make it.
You go break the beer now.
I don't have a license, beer will move me.
Hey, we just, we just, now, another question, Commissioner Jacob.
I was in, I'm sorry. I spoke this before, I really heard everything that's going on. So I apologize for my last statement. But I was looking at a date. Y'all wanna go ahead and set the date. December the 11th is a Tuesday. And the only thing that's on the county account on here is a gun permit class. That'd be good for all of us.
Then prepare, y'all.
December the 11th. It's the same Tuesday.
What, random time?
Uh, six, I guess. That's fine.
Yes, I'll, it gets available or.
Any other discussion before we vote?
What's motion? I'll vote.
I try to bear with it. An organizational meeting. Bear with it. All eyes. Motion passed.
I take that. That is an organizational meeting. So that, that, I'll say, it's a, it's a, it's a.
Do you have anything else?
Patty, can you repeat the names? Neither me or the clerk got them.
The names?
Yeah.
Randall Jenkins, Brad Johnson. Randall Jenkins, Brad Johnson, Patty Whibley, Travis Hill, Layla Ward, Mike Hill.
Set six.
And I talked with Mrs. Whibley about it earlier, and probably we'll come back to rules of my laws, I guess, but we can talk about that here for me, too. The, the resolution from 1973 just says there's six members, and they serve at the pleasure of the county board. To my knowledge, it's never been defined any further than that. So we can do a new resolution that clarifies numbers and terms if there's any changes you all wanna make. Because it's a little bit vague right now. Nobody has ever known when their terms actually end. But y'all can change that if you want to.
So if you're all elected officials, will these just want to be numbers?
It probably makes sense, but I, I don't know where this, the number six came from either. But like I said, this is in 1973, but probably not six members on any others.
Mr. Chair, I believe that we refer this to the rules of my laws for consideration. Second, second one. Mr. Frager. All in favor? Let's go to the floor, please. Motion, I like it, I got 50. Thank you, Chair. Have I overlooked any committees that need to be ordered? The highway. Okay. Do we have a last term? Mr. Neil. All roll.
First thing on the highway minutes is that there is a correction that if Eric Bailey was present and Travis Hill did not fill in on the highway committee meeting. He did fill in on landfill and, and the education committee. The problems that we've been having in highway have been mainly with weather. For example, in the case of Burbank, in October the 24th, 2017, we had flooding. Washed out a lot of tile. Almost a year later, October the 11th, 2018, we had a glancing blow up from Hurricane Michael that really did a little more damage than before. But a week before that, on August, two weeks before that, on August 6th, 2018, you had a problem. What we're saying is that a big portion of the, a big portion of the budget for the highway department has been expended in one place in the Burbank area. Of course, it's gotta be done, it's gotta be done, but I've been doing some studying on rain events. And you can pull that up and, and know that a rain event, 25-year rain event, a 50-year rain event, has to do with the amount of rainfall over extended period of time. So is the road department responsible for flooding? I'm talking about catastrophic flooding. I'm not talking about the spinus of a tile stuffed up, or a tile too small, or, or whatever. But I'm talking about rain events that are occurring more often, more often, and more often. You chose to did, to build a longer stream, as I chose to live in front, in front of a small stream, that'll six times a year turns out to be 60-foot wide. So where's the liability of, and responsibility for the road department to take care of catastrophic flooding? But that's, that's just something to chat about. The cost is enormous in that perspective. And we'll say this, that there is a program that needs to be instituted some way that has to do with fallen trees and driftwood in the streams. I don't know what percent of the problems are caused by this, but I do know that some are, because I've seen at least two or three examples. Before the new commission came in, I spoke about this once before, in relation to a campground that I know of, that has a driftwood dam on the left side of the river that's forcing water to the right side of the river. If that driftwood dam gives way, kiss goodbye to the campground. Because that's just the way it is. So, Mr. Mayor, Commission, we had a program at one time, but it was state-oriented, wasn't it? Through the sheriff's department.
No, I actually had.
And one time, there was a program addressed, what was?
At one time, I had through floodplain administration, and I actually did a lot of state tristers, and we had the equipment, but about eight, plus a little bit of time ago, it was canceled out. It wasn't flooded anymore, so we didn't, we don't utilize it now.
But that's statewide. It isn't, it's just something that.
No, it was actually.
Needs to be looked at some way by some committee.
Commissioner Von Cannon, that was pretty unique to Carter County.
Nancy Brown brought this up this time, and she sees examples of this in, in the river. Another thing that came out, I want to, many of these gentlemen are old, and have a stroke of genius, that has to do with being a realtor. Where you're, where are you going to expand your tax base in this county? It's not gonna be by industry, and I can tell you that, because if that's been my life, it's not going to be by industry. It's going to be by expanding your tax base in tourism, or expanding your tax base in building big homes in the mountains. And you can't build big homes in the mountains, as she pointed out, because you don't have any roads to get there. All kinds of land on Hornet Mountain, Buck Mountain. But there's still all kinds of lands that are natural forest that you can't build on. Therefore, we've got to work on some way to get to the lands before you can build those half million dollar houses.
Mr. Von Cannon, do you have any motions or anything?
No. Let me just try to finish before I fall out here.
Yeah, I don't want to fall out.
By the way, I do not drink. I do have, I did, I did have an occasion to get up too rapidly, and apparently, if you'll watch my exercise, I should have had to get rid of vertigo. But it's, it'll take a while. I remember, Bob Little Road was given to us by a, this Abbe. I drove Bob, uh, Bob, Bob Little Road this afternoon. It's good and wide. It's striped, double stripes all the way. You can't pass. A few places, you've got culverts that are short to the highway, but they've got signs up. The speed limit is 35, which I think is probably too high. By the way, for the new commissioners, the speed limit county-wide is 35 unless otherwise posted. So both of you, apparently, already know that. The speed limit is 20, 35 on Bob Little Road. Apparently, from what I gathered from the bus driver, it was a road truck that was in there, probably following GPS from Gatrick Road, or the new, uh, the new road through Bob Little to Snap-on, or one of those built. So, we talked to the bus driver a little more, and see which way he was going, and, and if it was a commercial truck or a company truck, and then maybe a GPS sign on one of the other ends of both ends is in order. But we're, we're not sure.
Maybe you can take that back to your committee, Mr. Von Cannon.
Anyway, I have.
More?
I have no motions. Except I, I've been going around and around and.
I know. I'm worried about you.
And there's a, there was one guy. And there's a, there was one guy that came from Johnson County with some ideas, and we told him, he was invited by one of the commissioners, and he had some ideas about writing 321, uh, and from, to either Mount City or through Boone. But the motion was to write a letter, have the county attorney write a letter, asking the state to look at this, and, and the letter was not in, was not in your vintage, but it was said it was, but it didn't get put in there. Please bear with me, I have gone through three, two cancer diagnoses. Three years ago, kidney, and in July, lung, and I don't have the lung cancer anymore, it's taken out, I don't have the kidney anymore. But I wanna go as far as I can, as fast as I can with you, and I do wanna do that. If you see fit to go otherwise, when I say, give it in, and I'll say, no.
Sound like I'm gonna have to say. You make it okay?
Well, you won't have to watch me get rid of my vertigo, I don't think. It's called an Epley maneuver, and it's awful.
I think we're ready for the county attorney to report.
Sure, I won't take too much time. There, there's no litigation update, which I guess is good, we haven't been sued this month, so nothing really urgent about this. Of course, if anybody have any specific questions, or you have a concern about a case that the county's involved in, ask me and I'll be glad to deliver any of it with you. As always, this month, I reviewed contracts and policies, did a bunch of research for different offices. I did, Mr. Truitt had did mention earlier about the, the resolution we passed for the Postmortem Death Act. I did forward that to all the Tennessee General Assembly members representing Carter County. And I did, at his request, I called and spoke with the lady over there at the forensic center, I forgot her name, Laura.
Laura Arsens.
Arsens. And I did talk with her, and for the most part, frankly, she just seemed offended that, that anybody would question this, and talked about the national trend, but I indicated that that was the position of Carter County, and she didn't seem too supportive of any, any changes that are involved, of course, she works there. But anyway, I did talk to her, but it wasn't all that fruitful. And of course, if the state general assembly takes action on that and amends that law, then, then we'll have some more leeway there, but as it stands, that's the state law, an absolute change, we're, we're kinda stuck with what we have. My understanding is that the contract that we signed is actually back in limbo again, I think, and there's, the counties have kinda banded together, and they're maybe renegotiating that. So I think we're into just another extension right now. So actually, what was approved, that year long contract is kinda been rescinded, it never was approved by then, I think, maybe maybe that's something.
The first year, extended contract through the first year, and are trying to get it to where, we're trying to negotiate a cheaper, cheaper prices now, but since I found out we're moving down to the, to the, to the hill, so, repelling fields, we're carrying to the hill for us, so, now, we're gonna talk a little more, so hopefully, we'll talk about maybe four years at a cheap, cheap rate, we're still negotiating, or, still negotiating what, but that's, that's where we're at right now.
Okay. And if you have those meetings or whatever with the others, if their attorneys want our resolution, I can send it to them, so they will have to just retype it, if they're just gonna copy. I'd be happy to let them use mine, that work on ours.
We've forwarded it to Washington and Johnson Counties so far.
Okay. Do you have a question?
Is there any sort of exclusivity, a clause in the contract or anything like that?
Uh, it's just that they're gonna provide services to this county, I mean, so essentially yes, I mean, but it's, it's the entire development district, I think it's, is it eight, eight counties total, I believe, and we're all in one basket with them, so, we, we do have some powers in, in numbers, but yeah, I mean, it is, they are the exclusive provider. And, but for that, I mean, I think we're, we're going to Knoxville, the closest place that we can do it, and we would have to negotiate our own deal there, which may put us in a weaker position. But otherwise, as usual, anything that's asked of me to look at or report to, or attend committees, which I've been several this month, and if anybody has any specific questions, I'll answer them, otherwise, I always put a written report in minutes.
I will like to announce that we will not have a full commission meeting this year.
We will have...
About the committees.
We will have committees. Yeah. We'll have committee meetings.
Well, it's my understanding that we didn't have a full commission meeting last year, or year before last, is that correct?
We didn't have a full commission meeting last year. It was the year of power that I believe in, so that's your fault.
Well, I mean, if you're having a committee meeting, you're not bringing it to the floor, right? Commissioner Brannstedt?
Commissioner Mike Hill, concerns, in years past, prior to, even with me being on commission, even prior to, there's been county business that has been needed to be deducted at, at December meetings, you know, that's one of the reasons why we haven't. As long as all the office holders and group of the day have nothing that's gonna, you know, nothing's gonna take place, nothing's gonna happen in December, but I'm, I'm okay with that, but, you know, there are budget amendments, there are stuff and projects that have to be, so I would like to see this.
I'll just change my mind. We will have a full commission meeting. Does that help? Does that help everybody? I got smiles from some of you. Not something right this time. Mayor?
This is my last time. This is on a good note. It's on the calendar, December 13th, we're gonna have, we're gonna have Christmas dinner here, 11 to 1, December 13th, so, Frank, if you're a dish, you can, you know me, so, but December 13th, from 11 to 1, we're gonna have a Christmas dinner downstairs.
Okay, thanks for serving us. Okay. Commissioner Collins? Merry Christmas. Have a nice weekend.